All right. It is 7:03, and I will call this meeting to order. I will do a visual roll call, and I think we're good to go. Oh, are you going to do a verbal roll call? Okay. Councilmember Cloven?
I'm here.
Councilmember Tillman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Here.
Excellent, and I am here as well. All right. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next is Item Three, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. If anyone has anything that is not on the agenda, now is the time to speak. And I think, first, I think you mentioned that you wanted to say something, so feel free.
I have a couple of things I want to go over, and they're related to the last meeting on the 19th of September. The first was the issue of a perception that I may have been texting during that evening and not attentive to what was going on at the meeting. And what I would like to say is, is that I arrived here at about 6:55 that evening, having just come from another business meeting over in Concord. And I did not have time, as usual, to stop and pick up my iPad, which I have with me tonight, and which I regularly use this at meetings to monitor the agenda of the meeting and the notes that I have made and so on and so forth. And that I use this similar to everyone here who has laptops or other digital devices that they use. And at the time, the only thing I had was my iPhone. And when I went to go on the Zoom, lo and behold, I could not get access. And the reason was, my iPhone did not have the latest Zoom app on it. And so, basically, I was working with the program to get the Zoom function working so that I could monitor what was going on on the agenda, in the meeting, and on Zoom. This resulted in my having to reload again the Zoom app. That was due to the fact that it was not in residence at the, at my iPhone. And it appeared there was actually texting, which I don't text during the meetings, and not paying attention to the city proceedings, which I was able to and continue to do. And for that, I apologize to those present at the meeting or on Zoom. Secondly, I would like to take a brief moment and acknowledge that my comments at the last City Council meeting about the onsite and oversight committee function that was being proposed were not appropriate to the forum, and to that, I also apologize. My concern and frustration about what occurred in the past should have been directed to the appropriate party behind closed doors. I met today with the city manager this morning for our regularly scheduled meeting, where I was able to address and discuss my concerns. Again, I thank you. I apologize for those two items, and thank you for the opportunity to address the community.
Thank you. If there is any other comment in the audience, now is the time, or if you are online, feel free to raise your hand. Seeing none?
Mayor Juan, we actually do have a speaker card, as well as someone on Zoom.
Perfect. I don't have the card, so I don't know who's in it, but feel free.
Yes, it's not a name, but a phone number, ending in 87.
Let's do the speaker card first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is a speaker card.
Okay.
With the phone number, the last two digits, ending in 87.
I believe it's Mr. Hayden here.
Okay.
You being clever.
Keith Hayden, 1542 O'Hara. Yes, I filled out a lot of information, but I guess I left off my name, so, thank you. Thank you for addressing the council. I do want to repeat that I think it's very important that all council members do participate and observe what's going on in the council meeting, so I appreciate that, and I'm glad that the council has that policy. So, ask that that continue to be the example, that they're following that policy reassures the public that you're listening to all the discussion and able to participate and represent the town well, so thank you for that. Second, I wanted to thank the mayor for the town hall that you conducted after the last City Hall meeting, and also encourage you to continue doing that. I think the dialogue is important, important for the mayor. As you indicated, you're unable to respond to public comment, so that allowed you to provide your explanation of some positions that were taken. I think there's still work to be done there on getting everyone to understand what's truly being said and making sure it benefits our entire community. So, that's what we're all here for. Certainly, the council was elected for that, so I appreciate your attempt to open that door and encourage you to continue that and listen to the, to the comments. Gives you a better feel for the overall issues before our community, so I appreciate that. And then, lastly, I want to certainly recognize the CBCA and Marilyn and Charlie Schmidt for a wonderful Oktoberfest that was just conducted. Had lots of people downtown, starting Friday evening with the carnival, and then two full days. We certainly hope these events can continue into the future. In fact, I worked as a duty answering lots of questions about the festival, and that was a common question people posed, was, were we going to have this next year? So, I know the council's working on that, and I encourage you to do everything possible to make sure the community still is able to enjoy those very, very helpful, fun, but excellent, revenue-generating events as well that help our whole community. So, in particular, I wanted to thank Peter Cloven. He helped me as well both days. And again, the overall impression was, it was enjoyed by all and had two good days, so we want to continue those events. Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Rogers? It's on already, so you're good.
Just a quick question. On the consent calendar from the last meeting, there was a contract with HDL, and I was wondering, did that con, you had specifically asked for a clarification on the termination of the contract, so I was wondering if that contract was signed and if the clarification...
Yeah, so I got the clarifying language today. I just need to take a quick look at it, but my history of working at HDL, I'm sure it's good, and I'll be signing it if that language meets what we need.
Okay, so, as far as city council input on that, that's over?
We've got direction of, you know, wanting the data protected and the transition protected of that data if we were to terminate the agreement, and, you know, that's pretty straightforward on what we're going to look forward in that contract, you know, before we're signing.
Yeah, so typically, the staff gave direction, and the staff will, or council gave direction, and staff will execute, so that's, that's per normal.
So, it's really past the point for any comments about HDL?
I would just say you're welcome to make comments at any time.
Okay.
But the, you know, the council gave direction.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other hands in the audience, or cards, I believe, do we have anyone online?
Yes, Mayor Juan, we do have two hands raised on Zoom. CW, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. Please unmute your microphone. You'll have three minutes to address the council.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening, council and city manager and staff. I'm CW Wolf, president of the CBCA. At our September meeting, the CBCA members voted to approve a $50,000 donation to the Mount Diablo Interpretive Association towards funding the construction of the new education center at the Mitchell Canyon entrance to Mount Diablo State Park. This is something that the council's familiar with, as the MDIA made a presentation to you several months ago. This donation reinforces the CBCA's commitment to funding education programs in and around the greater Clayton community, just as we have done since 1984. Now, I have reached out to the mayor via email, which is now in the public record, the public comment, to keep the lines of communication open between the CBCA and the city. And just to clarify, the CBCA continues to hold out hope that we can reach a mutually acceptable agreement with the city regarding our festivals and events. However, we do not understand why the city manager will not be allowed to participate in these meetings, even though the last interim city manager attended and was vital to the conversation and discussion. We've had to take a step back, unfortunately, from setting an actual meeting date due to a member of our board having to have emergency surgery last week, but we will, however, be in touch with possible meeting dates very soon. Now, finally, the CBCA Clayton Oktoberfest was held this past weekend, and it was a rousing success. And many thanks to our committee chairperson Marilyn Schmidt, her husband Charlie, the entire committee, and the many volunteers and visitors from Clayton and all over the Bay Area for helping to support the CBCA and the many programs that rely on us, some for their very survival. Thank you.
The next speaker is Teri. Teri, as I promote you to panelist, please unmute your microphone. You will have three minutes to address the council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, excellent. All right, so, since 2019, we have had four different city managers, full-time city managers, with, I think, about three or four different interim city managers. That's on the, on an average order of about two different folks in that role per year. I think the Clayton community has welcomed Brett with open arms and really appreciated the engagement sessions he's done with the community and helped us to understand some of the budget deficits and some of the unsustainable structural deficits that are existing within the city today. I am very concerned, and I think every Clayton resident should be concerned, about the, about the noise that we're hearing in the community, about Mayor Juan, that Mayor Juan may be threatening to fire him without unsubstantiated causes. And with seeing that's what Vice Mayor Diaz did during the last meeting, trying to, trying to make it look as if Brett had done something that's, that, we didn't understand where that came from, that he had done something wrong. It's really frustrating from, from the community's perspective. It really feels like there's a lack of transparency, where we get together and we hear, you know, we go to these coffees and we hear about budget deficits, but then we come to the mayor's town hall, and there's about zero discussion about any of these structural or, you know, any of these structural or financial issues. And so, one has to leave to question whether our city manager is getting attacked behind the scenes, and I think every citizen should be asking these kind of questions, because I don't think Clayton, I don't think a Clayton can afford to lose another good city manager, especially the one that has come in with so much enthusiasm toward helping us rectify some of these systemic issues. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have one more person with their hand up.
Steve, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. Please unmute your mic, unmute your microphone.
Yeah, hopefully you can hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, great, thanks. Steve Pratt, off of Yolanda Circle here. First of all, I want to say thank you, Mayor Juan, for, you know, hosting a town hall. I appreciate it. Hopefully, we can get some other council members, I don't know if it's only open to yourself, but others as well there, so we can have some more great dialogue. I appreciate that. My comment will be short. What I wanted to do is say that, you know, kind of over probably the last six months or so, you know, the vision that I hear coming out of City Hall has been to move the city into a sustainable future, to main, to maintain the Clayton that I love and I know you all love. And if we want this future, we're going to have to spend some money, is my understanding. And so far, I'm only hearing words coming, you know, from the council, and I'd really like to see your all's support put into action and that leadership to show that, yes, you know, it's, it's okay to spend money to maintain and, and really have that sustainable future that we all want for Clayton. So far, I'm not seeing it, but I'm holding out the hope that it will come, that it will come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised. So, with, with that, I will close public comment and move on to consent calendar. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to pull from consent?
Am I going?
Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to pull Item C.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, then we can discuss Item C and then move together, I think, so feel free.
Sure, thank you. I noticed that this item didn't have anything else behind it. Typically, staff, I think, would give us their recommendation on a policy and then bring it to us so that we can see it, see it and discuss. So, I'd like to know why it's blank and, and staff is not writing the policy. That's my first question.
I'll, I'll start, and then you could fill in. So, we were discussing about what the best ways to prepare to work through this policy. It hasn't yet been drafted.
Who's, we?
Myself and the city manager.
Okay.
We're discussing.
Uh huh.
And in order to work through that process, similar to how we're doing for the special event, I think we're, special event policy, I forget what we're, because I was recalling, special event policy that we discussed last week, I asked him to put this on the agenda so that we can take it in the same manner. And I believe there is a brief, one-page staff report that describes it. So, I don't know if you had the chance to see that.
No, mine was blank when I printed it out, so let me go back through.
Oh, okay. It's a, if you, yeah, I don't, I don't know if you have it, but it is online. And I know that we had, did have some issues this go-around with the agenda posting, so that could have been contributory.
Maybe. So, there was something there that you redlined, you're going to redline, because I could not, mine did not show.
No. So, if your, if your, yeah, if your question is, was there a full policy there?
Correct.
There is no.
Okay.
There, it is a green field at this point. There's nothing written, and so this...
That's my point. It's blank, and you're creating the policy.
Together, we're going to work. So, what this does is it appoints a ad hoc committee, the same one that we appointed last week to discuss the special event policy.
Yes.
To work with staff to draft the policy. That's what the staff report describes.
So, I read it, for city council members to be involved in the policy development/feedback. The discussion must be in public or through a subcommittee appointed by the city council. And the recommendation is to appoint you two to write the draft policy for the special event fee policy related to this section of the master fee schedule. That does not read that they're going to work with, you're going to work with staff. It reads, appoint you two to write it, and that's my concern. It's blank, and you're, you're writing it from scratch. Are you saying that that is not going to occur, that you're actually going to have one that we have not all seen, which is different than what happened at the last meeting? So, at the last meeting, there was a draft that staff wrote. We all had a chance to look at that, and then we, you were appointed, the, the subcommittee, to wordsmith it and then bring it back. That doesn't seem to be the case, because I don't see anything written here. It's a blank page.
Yeah, there's no draft policy, because it says it's not written. That's correct.
So, why is that different, then? That's, I'm trying to understand why council is doing staff's job.
I think it's all of our jobs to, to write policy.
So, we are, but our job is not to write it from scratch. Staff, the experts, write it for us. They give us the recommendation, and then we digest that and give them feedback so that we can synthesize the policy and then adopt it. This is completely different than anything in my three, almost three years of sitting here that's ever happened. I don't, am I crazy?
I just want to go one, one step further. At our last meeting, we approved the two of you, thank you, for taking the time, to review the document that was prepared by our city manager and to make redlines to it. I definitely want to see a document that has redlines, so I can see what the original document looked like versus the changes that you're making. The appointment of a subcommittee is what is being requested today. Didn't we give you that ability as a subcommittee to help rewrite that today?
Yeah, that's what I thought. However...
But, but, I wanted, that's what we approved two weeks ago, is a subcommittee to review the language and to help with the policy.
So, just to clarify...
Will that, will that subcommittee be doing anything else?
Yeah, to clarify, last week was specific around the special event policy. This is the, around the special event fee. So, slightly different. It's, it's using two of the three same words, but it is specifically talking about what is, what does a special event fee encompass?
And during my time sitting in your chair as mayor, I made a very, very strong attempt to have voices with different opinions on committees of significance to our city. For instance, I respected your financial acumen and the councilmember Tillman, then Vice Mayor Tillman's background in finance as well, and I appointed the two of you, knowing that you both had different opinions, to the Budget and Odd Committee, because I knew that would be in the benefit of our community to have two different voices and to get in the same subcommittee. I would respectfully ask that you do and consider the same, have voices that may not necessarily agree, be in the same subcommittee, so we can come to conclusions for all of Clayton. So, I respectfully request to be a part of the subcommittee, if you don't mind.
Okay. Yeah, when we talked about this last week, there was no interest, and so...
But it's changed, and since you're morphing the responsibility relative to what we had agreed to last week, it, the, the language has changed, and the intention has changed. That's why I'm, you're creating a different responsibility for the subcommittee, which we didn't approve last week.
Yeah, and that's why we're bringing it forward.
And that's why I'm asking to be on the subcommittee this time. Is there a challenge with that, Mala?
I think the request is fine.
Correct, and I just wanted to clarify, which I think the mayor was trying to do as well, there are two different subcommittees.
Correct.
And so, yes, you could have different people on this.
Right, this subcommittee is not the same, or this, this exercise is not the same, because there are two different policies, so...
Clearly, that's why we're doing, that's why we're back.
No, you just now said that it sounded like we had already agreed that you guys would be the subcommittee for the special event policy. That was two weeks ago. This is different, since this is for the master use, or the master fee schedule. So, they are two different groups, and as Mala just pointed out, they can be two different subcommittees. But I will still ask my question and try to understand why we're starting from a blank slate, instead of having staff show all of us what they're proposing, because for all you know, you might agree with what they come back with. So, I'm trying to understand why we're starting from scratch and why this is completely deviating from anything that any council's done that I've ever seen.
I don't have an answer for that. I think it's more efficient. I could work a lot faster than through back and forth, but I take it that you may disagree.
I do, because you're not staff, like, you're not municipal government. You're actually running, you're, you're elected to represent people, but you don't write, you don't write policy. You approve the ones that are given to us by staff, so I'm trying to understand. And Mala, you can interject, and so can Brett and Amy, and Dana, for that matter. Have you guys ever seen a council write their own policies from scratch?
I don't think that's germane to the topic.
It actually is.
I, I disagree.
Okay.
We could vote on it if you want.
I don't want to vote on it yet.
I would call it a point of order and say that's not germane to the topic.
I'm trying to actually ask, it is. I'm trying to actually ask if this is normal procedure for councils to write policy from scratch.
Actually, I would move that as a point of order, that's not germane to the topic, and I'd ask, if we have a second, then that would kill this.
Oh, because you don't want people to know that you're doing something that's not normal?
No, I think that the history of how things are done in other circumstances is not germane to the topic.
It absolutely, it absolutely is. What you're doing, and I want everyone in this room to realize what is happening, is that this mayor is doing something that is not normal procedure. He is not staff. He is not an expert. He does not write policy. So, I want everybody to be paying attention to what is about to happen right now. Carry on. You do you.
Thank you. Is it, are you, are you good? No more comments?
I made my request.
Can I ask a point of clarification? So, I guess my assumption is that this was the same committee, and now we're working on a different policy related to special events.
Yes.
So, is it the same committee?
It doesn't necessarily have to be the same committee.
Well, no, but I thought it was the same committee.
So...
It's not the same committee. I didn't want, as I understood it, you wanted to ad hoc, you wanted an ad hoc committee, which is not subject to the Brown Act. So, my concern is, they're typically limited subject matter, single subject matter, so you, so I wanted to create a second ad hoc committee, because if you start adding things to the original ad hoc committee that aren't part of the original scope, then I would be concerned that we'd start becoming a committee that would be required to be subject to the Brown Act. So, this is a second ad hoc committee.
Second ad hoc, okay.
It's a tangential topic to what we had discussed last week, but because it was different enough, then it made sense to segregate it in terms of the committee. And when you do that, you can assign whoever, whoever the council determines to do. So, here, because we had already worked on the previous policy that was adjacent to this one, I suggested to our city manager, if he could put it in the agenda this way, so that we could continue the work that we're already doing around the subject. So, that being said, I think we've heard the concerns from our other council members, and if you want to make a motion, then we can do that.
Mayor, have we taken public comment on the consent calendar?
You're right, we have not done that.
Thank you.
We should do that. All right, so let's do public comment. If anyone in the audience has any comment, now is the time. Seeing none, do we have any? Oh, I see one hand raised.
Teri, I'll momentarily promote you to panelist. Please unmute your microphone. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, sorry. We had a little bit of confusion. Ms. Kendorf, if you would please go first, that would be great, and then we will get to the folks that are online. I didn't call your attention to that.
Lauren Kendorf. And I'm understanding from our city attorney that this is a different topic, that is a different committee, so I'm not quite understanding why a committee that was assigned a project or a, a task from last week, or last meeting, is just assuming that they will go over and have full control over another topic. It's two separate entities. So, I would like to ask the council to recognize we have two separate topics here that need two separate groups to address the topic, so that everybody is represented.
Did you have a comment as well?
Yep.
All right, come, please. We typically take the folks that are in the room, so, all right.
Thank you. Keith Hayden again. Sounds...
Sounds like this would be a subcommittee just to work on the initial draft about the special event fee policy. So you already had a subcommittee working on the policy and now you're working on just the fee policy. So am I correct in assuming that we, the public, will see the initial draft of this fee policy and able then to comment and provide input at that time?
Correct. Yeah, any policy of the council would, you know, the subcommittee is there for drafting and then it would come to the full council for a final...
Just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Wan, I have no other speaker cards on this item. I do have two speakers on Zoom. First is Terry. Terry, I will momentarily promote you to panelist. Please unmute your microphone. You will have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you for the time. I just wanted to reiterate that I think the questions that were just posed by Councilmember Tillman are of interest and germane to the topic. I personally, and I think others would like to have heard. And I hope she will re-ask those questions. The answers to the questions regarding is this normal to have the council writing policy and not the staff? Personally, I'm interested to know and understand and I'm extremely alarmed by the effort by Mayor Wan to try to hush her question. I think the public would like to hear that answer if you're willing to re-ask it, Councilmember Tillman. Thank you.
Next speaker on Zoom is Howard. Howard, I will promote you to panelist. Please unmute your microphone.
There you go. Can you hear me? I don't see that I'm on.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Mayor Wan, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Being a mayor, being on the city council for eight years and probably have attended 100 city council meetings, I've watched the city council talk about different topics. Once they have a good discussion about the topics, then it's the mayor's job to give direction to council to write policy. At that point, policy comes back to the city council where they get a chance to, again, read it, discuss it, talk about changes, adapt the climate, and then make a vote. This is the norm. Staff always writes policy because we hired them because they're professionals. City council are people that volunteer. And we don't know how deep the background is for their abilities. And they're voted by a popular vote. And that's why we have a city employees that have expertise that we make sure before we hire them, they're capable of doing job. It is our job, as your job as the mayor, to give direction to staff to write the policy and move on. I don't expect that you'll be doing this because you have not done that yet since you've been the mayor. But I want everyone to know that that is the norm in every, only in Clayton. And that Clayton is becoming the talk of the town because of that.
All right, seeing no other hands raised, I will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council.
I still pose my question to staff to ask if this is normal. I think we just heard from Mr. Geller, who has been a mayor and on city council for eight years here in the city. Is it normal and/or appropriate? Not that it's, I'm sure it's fine to do, but is it normal for council to be writing policy from scratch?
So to answer your question, council member, so typically in my experience, I've done this in both the county and the city, typically staff will bring forward a draft policy around a certain topic that a board or a council will want to see. That council will make tweaks and edits typically in the room. If they're extremely substantial, staff may come back at a future meeting to rewrite some of it. But typically, it's either refining certain sections or depending on the flavor of the council, wordsmithing at times. That's kind of been my 15 years of bringing forward items to both boards and city councils.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I don't see where it says that we are forming another ad hoc committee. So I misunderstood as well when I read this in the agenda. It just said appointing, that was the staff recommendation, to appoint Mayor Wan and Councilmember Trupiano to write the draft policy. So why don't we all take a step back? And could we have the staff write the policy and then bring it back to a committee of whomever that is going to be to review and redline, just like we did very quickly after the last meeting?
Yeah, and that's exactly the intent of what this is. Because when we brought, when staff brought back the other policy, you know, we had some, I think we had fairly extensive comments. And so to avoid doing that one meeting and then coming back another meeting and doing the same thing, my request was that perhaps we can work through staff's draft policy without having to do two rounds at council for that. But because, you know, I was informed that that's not appropriate given that this is a different, yet adjacent topic, that we should formally appoint a separate ad hoc committee to essentially do the same thing that we would do anyways. And so rather than having staff write a full policy, spend the time to bring it to completion, let's say, and then us reworking it again, I asked, hey, can we just work on it together? How about you come up with a draft and then we'll work on it offline? And then when we come to council, it'll be more fleshed out. But that wasn't appropriate, I was told. So here we are, appointing the committee to do exactly what you just said. The expectation isn't that we, staff, or sorry, we, us, will write a policy because I'm not really interested in doing that. Although we could if we wanted to, but that's not really the intent. The intent is staff create a draft, work through the subcommittee, come up with whatever suggestions or, you know, changes along with staff, and then bring it back to the full council for discussion when it's more fully fleshed out. So that is entirely consistent with how we are doing the last item. And so this accelerates that process. That's what this is meant to do. So I don't expect that we will be writing a policy ourselves.
Okay. So staff is going to write the policy and then bring it back to a newly formed ad hoc committee of whomever?
Correct.
Is that, okay.
May I ask a question then? I've known that this special event fee item was going to come in October. I think I probably knew that from my weekly meetings with the city manager, probably going back to August. So I'm a little confused on why we didn't do exactly what happened last meeting and exactly how you just described it right now, which is very different than how you described it at the onset of this topic. So is there a reason why staff didn't just go ahead and create the draft and bring it tonight and then have all of that in one document so that we can see it?
Yeah, in our normal, like you have your weeklies, I have my weeklies, and I looked ahead at what's on the agenda and/or on future agendas. And I realized that we would likely have the same scenario in that we would want to make edits. So I suggested, hey, let's do that now. But I was told no. So in order to accelerate, and so I think it was scheduled for whatever the second meeting in October is.
The 17th.
17th. And so in advance of that, I said, well, we can probably look at the draft early, make various edits, and then have it actually come back on the 17th. But if we wait until the 17th to do the exact same thing, we likely wouldn't come back until perhaps the first meeting in November, but perhaps the first meeting in December. So anyways, that's the long and the short of it.
My understanding was that there was, we wouldn't all see it at the same time, which is problematic. So I'm still just trying to understand clearly what we're going to do here. So we're all in agreement that staff is going to write the draft and then it sounds like full council won't see it until the subcommittee sees it? Or are you saying we're all going to see it on the 17th?
Yes, that's right.
Which is right?
The first one.
Articulate exactly what's going to happen, please.
So the intention is that staff will write the policy, subcommittee will review, comments, changes will be made, and then it will be presented to the full council.
Okay. And I just want to be extra careful that the same thing that happened with the master fee schedule doesn't happen, which is to Mr. Hayden's question, that the public will actually get to have input. The master fee schedule didn't go as planned or at least was a lot messier than it needed to be. And so I want to ensure that that doesn't happen, which is why it would have been cleaner for us all to see what you guys come up with. And then we could opine and the public could opine. And then we could wordsmith it, staff can change it, bring it back, and then we can vote. My concern is that it will just get the blessing, which is I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. I'm comfortable with it, et cetera, et cetera, because you've already worked with it, with staff on it. And that's problematic to Mr. Hayden's point, that the public won't really get any input. And the reason why I say that is we already saw what happened with the special event fee enclosing down the streets, et cetera, for the $10,000. And I don't want to have that happen again. And so to the extent that we can make sure that we actually do have input and that it is not just rubber stamped the night of it coming back, I really do want to be sure that there's community engagement in whatever it is that we've come up with and that we don't expect to just pass it on the 17th. I do really want to make sure that that's, because that's my concern, is that this is going to be ongoing and we're going to continuing arguing about things. So I'm glad to hear that staff is actually going to write it since it was a blank piece of paper and I still don't understand why it was blank now. But I'll take you at your word that staff is going to write this and that we're all going to see it on the 17th in its full version. But I still do want to address the question of having other members on this committee.
Yeah, I don't know if the 17th is set in stone. I think that's depending on essentially staff workload. So I would not commit staff to doing that until they're able to.
That's fine.
The city-sponsored special event policy will be coming back the 17th from the subcommittee. That is good to go, but this one might get pushed to the first one in November just for...
And also to Mr. Hayden's point and Councilmember Tillman, the public does get to see everything that's in the agenda packet and have an opportunity to comment on it at the meetings. Nothing is set in stone until it's set in stone. So nobody's doing anything nefarious, which is what I feel like you're suggesting.
No, I wasn't saying there was anything nefarious. What I mean is if we're going to really allow the public to have a comment, I do think that once they're coming up to the podium and they're speaking for their three minutes and then we barely have any discussion here at the dais, then to me, it does feel like there's already been a decision made. And I'm just saying that I like that we're actually talking longer on this topic. That's what I mean, just to deliberate.
I just took issue with the first line. The recommendation is to appoint Mayor Wan and Councilmember Trupiano to write the draft policy. So I'm glad that we've changed that.
Yeah, it should be work with staff.
So can we amend this item for C to say, to review the policy written by staff? We need to change the way this is worded right off. And the challenge I've had is when a subcommittee or the mayor looks at a document, the language is, "I'm comfortable with that," is because he's written it and worded it that way. We found that previously also with regard to the council guidelines, which he completely wrote and redlined. And any changes that were suggested, no, I'm comfortable with the way it's written because he wrote it. You have a history of doing that and that's why it's a general concern with the way this is going to be presented. I'm just stating my truth for that. And thank you.
So then do we have a motion? Did you want to make one?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to appoint Mayor Wan and Councilmember Trupiano to review the policy that staff writes. Is there something wrong? Okay. To review the policy that staff writes for the special event fee policy related to this section of the master fee schedule. And then staff will bring it back to the full council to review at a future date.
And I will second that.
All right. Am I still doing the roll? I'd be glad to if you'd like. All right. Because I wasn't sure if we changed it with the other thing. So, all right, I will take the roll. So Councilmember Clovan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman.
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz.
Yes.
And I also say aye. That concludes item four, the consent calendar.
I think that was just approving for C as I understood it. If you'd like to prove the balance of the consent calendar.
Yes.
Awesome. Then that was for C. Would we like to have a motion for items four A and B?
Move.
Second.
Do we have public comment on that?
We took public comment on the entire consent calendar.
Thank you. That was only for C.
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman. I'm calling for the roll for the vote.
Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Trupiano.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz.
Yes.
Aye as well. That concludes the remainder of item four, the consent calendar. Next is item five, recognitions and presentations. Two items are informational only. This is to recognize National Disability Employment Awareness Month and Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month. And then we have a presentation from the East Bay Regional Parks District. Mr. City Manager, are you introducing our guest?
Yes, I am. So I'd like to introduce John Mercurio, our board member from East Bay Regional Parks District. He's going to go over a short presentation with you all today.
And you're going to advance for me?
Yeah, our city, our community development director will be doing that for you.
All right, so let's get something up there and then I can get started. But in the meantime, mayor, council members and staff, I'm John Mercurio, your new Ward Six Director for the East Bay Regional Park District. And I just wanted to, my purpose of coming here is twofold. One is to give you an update on the park district and what's going on, focusing on kind of like what's around here, right? What's important to folks that live in Clayton. And the other one is to just introduce myself and I'm your guy. You know, I mean, because the fact of the matter is I was not on the ballot because there was no other opponent. So they save money that way by, apparently it's several hundred thousand dollars at the park district. So that's the way they do it. So I feel kind of on the hook here to not be a mystery person. And so I've been going around to some of the, I'm going to be going to all six of my cities plus a Mac or two and introducing myself. So I just appreciate the chance to do that. I succeeded Beverly Lane, who served for 28 years in this position. You can see it's kind of a stable position that park directors get to enjoy. She's a personal friend and I was honored to be able to succeed her. And the thing about that is though, that she's from Danville and that's great. And, but she's not from Concord, so, or Clayton. I consider myself kind of a dual citizen because I live about a mile from here. So I spent a lot of time in Clayton and I know something about Clayton and I'm going to try to do my best to maximize what we can do in the city of Clayton. So that's kind of what I've been thinking about. So the park, just a little bit about the park, history of the park. So the, a park, just a little bit about the park, history of the park district. We were established in the depths of the depression in 1934, when some of the movers and shakers in Oakland and the East Bay were looking up at the hills, the Berkeley Oakland Hills. And there was some public land up there, but it was about to be sold for development. And they said, you know, we were, we don't think that really being such a great idea. We think there's a better use for it. There was a plan that had been prepared a few years before. And so they put it to the voters, and in 1934, they voted to tax themselves for this unknown park district idea. And so it's kind of taken off since then. We are the largest park district in the nation, 73 regional parks, 126,000 acres of, of parks and open space, and 1,300 miles of trail, including 200 miles of regional trail, which is mostly paved. And then the one that, that always, people always kind of wonder about, like, really, is that we have 55 miles of bay shoreline. So extending from the northern boundary of Santa Clara County all the way around, and then east to past Oakley, actually, we have 55 miles of, of shoreline. And much of that is developed into accessible parkland that you can have a picnic, walk a trail, whatever you might want to do. We have 25 million annual visits. Most of those, the most popular way that people access a regional park facility is on a trail. So it just so happens that that's my favorite thing. So I feel like I'm in the right place. Next. So our mission, yeah. We strive to preserve a rich heritage of natural and cultural resources and provide open space parks, trails, safe and healthful recreation, and environmental education. And I mean, the whole environmental ethic is like built in to everything that we do. And the two, two big things we focus on are balancing public access and recreation with environmental stewardship. In other, in other words, we have to protect the land that we, that we, that we, that's in our district. But yet, we also have to allow folks to get in there and enjoy it to the extent that's possible, that's not prohibited by regulatory agencies. So that's a balancing act that we do. The other, the other balancing act we have is among the users balancing their, their needs. And sometimes, as you may be aware, there are, there are some conflicts. And I'll, I'll get into that a little bit later on next. So this is just to give you an idea of where we are. All those dark green areas are regional parks. The light green areas are other parks, something called Mount Diablo. I don't know what, you know, that is. They're out there. And so we have those. But then also, you probably can't tell from where you're looking now, but there's, there's red, red lines connecting most of those parks. And those are the regional trails. And that was an idea that started many decades ago, that it's not enough just to have trails of parks out there on all the ridgelines and along the shorelines. You know, we need to connect them all up. So we have, you know, many, many miles of regional trail. For example, you know, we have the Iron Horse Trail and the Canal Trail here. Other parts of the district have the Alameda Creek Trail and the Bay Trail. So the Bay Trail is actually in our district, we're responsible for building most of the Bay Trails. So we've been kind of picking away at that. And the, the thing we're dealing with now is all the easy parts have been built, and now we got the real hard stuff. So stay tuned. But there are long sections of the Bay Trail in West County that you can ride a bike on or walk or whatever. So this is just a look of, you know, Ward Six, which, which you're in, but you're barely in it, because just to the north of the city line is Ward, Ward Seven, which is Collin Coffee. But just to give an idea of how many parks there are in Ward Six here, there are 17 parks and trails. The population of it is nearly 400,000. And just kind, just kind of a fun fact that I kind of dug up recently, the district population, so Alameda and Contra Costa County added together, because we, we cover both counties, is larger than 15 states. So that's kind of interesting. I couldn't believe that, but it, I triple-checked it. It's, it's true. So, so the largest one of those is New Mexico. So we got more, more people than New Mexico. All right, next. This is just going to be kind of a quick rundown of, of what I'm going to be talking about here. And you can go next, again. So we'll start off with Thurgood Marshall Regional Park, home of the Port Chicago 50, honors the history of the deadly Port Chicago explosion during World War II, and the role that Thurgood Marshall played defending the survivors. So just as a bit of background, in 2022, the park district officially received ownership of 2,200, over 2,200 acres of the former Concord Naval Weapons Station. And the first general public access, which there isn't right now yet, but in a few years, we will open up a piece of the, of it south of Bailey Road. So if you're going up Bailey Road toward Pittsburgh on the right, we're going to open up that, almost 1,000 acres there. Probably in, if I had to guess, based on what I've been told, 2025. We're going to have there universally accessible trails, picnic tables, shade structures, restrooms, interpretive signage, and drinking water there. And we also, you know, this is an opportunity for me also, to thank some of our, our legislators for helping us out with funding these, this endeavor. So for the South of Bailey Project, and getting that built and, and designed and built, we can thank Assemblymember Grayson for $3 million to do that. And then over in the main part of the regional park, there's going to be a visitor's center, and Congressman DeSonia got us $3 million to start on the, the design of that. And the, the middle picture there is artist conception of what the visitor's center would, would might look like. It's in an existing building. It's, it's not much to look at right now. It's not much to smell right now. It's pretty awful. But when we clean it up and do something like that to it, it's going to be a beautiful place to interpret the history of the Naval Weapons Station, the local history of ranching. But, but, I mean, this is something that I, I think is really great, is that it's going to tell a key part of the, of the origin story of the civil rights movement in, in America. And there really isn't any, much, much of that available to tell this side of the Mississippi. But we're going to do it there in partnership with the National Park Service. So it's going to be a joint visitor's center. We do plan, you know, like I said, it's not open yet, but we do continue, plan to continue having special events around that visitor's center and other places. And so if you just keep an eye on the district's website, you can, you know, look in, in coming events, that it should say that there. I can't, I checked, and I didn't see anything there coming up really, really soon. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's a great, it's a great property. It's a great story. You know, take advantage of that if you can get out there. Next. So I talked about conflict a little bit, and this is, this is how we're trying to address it. There's, there's been, in some parks, we've had some conflict. And we're trying something new in Breone's Regional Park with what we call the Breone's Pilot Project. So in April of this year, we, we launched this temporary arrangement. It's a two-year pilot to test a variety of trail management strategies. The project is limited to a specific zone in the northeast corner of Breone's Regional Park, out of the Alhambra Staging area, if you know that park. So strategies in that pilot program would, will be odd, even alternating trail access on weekend days for bikes and equestrians. So equestrians on one day, bikes on the other. That is, that is a really, that's a tricky conflict that can happen sometimes between those two user groups. We're going to give an opportunity for folks to go in there and know that they're not going to encounter whatever one makes them nervous, whatever side you're on. We have three new pilot project trails designated bike only, downhill only. This is something that we've been asked to do for a long time, and we finally figured out a way to, to try that out. So the bicycle community is working with us on this. And it's the kind of thing where, you know, you're, you're not going to be walking on that because it's, it's a bike-only trail downhill, pretty fast. The other element of this project is to restore the illegally built trails that have been built there over the years. Many, many miles of illegally trail, illegal bootleg trails, maverick trails, rogue trails have been built. And we're going to try to erase those trails now because we're giving them a place to go. And we're hoping and we're expecting that the bicycle users will police themselves and, and use peer pressure to make sure that they don't go off, go off and keep doing that. We also, in that picture there, the right-hand picture shows the, the bell rack, and where we have it, we have but bells available for use. You can borrow it, use it when you come back out, you put it back, so that you can warn folks that you're, you're coming up on, that's the proper thing to do. Or passing on your left works pretty well, too. And so that's another thing we're trying out there. So next. So this is showing what we're, how we're, we're restoring the land. The thing about these, these bootleg trails is they're not really planned and built the way that sustainable trails are built. So they're usual, frequently too steep. They're right down the, the front of it, this, this side of a hill. They erode excessively, and they damage habitat. So that's, that's the motivation for us going in there. And you can see from those pictures there, it's a pretty involved process, meant to be permanent, to erase those trails and let the land go back to, to the way it was. And we have a program where once, once a month, volunteers can go out and do that work. That's how it's getting done. And I just checked, in the last one of those events that was held, there were 37 people that, that volunteered and went out there to work on that. And I, I've been out there, too, for one of them. And it's, it's mostly bicyclists who are doing that kind of work. So I just, I'm just really glad we figured out a way to at least get off the dime and get started on some way, working out some way to work out the, the conflicts. Next. All right, this is the real reason I'm here. The rest of that's just an excuse. Clayton Ranch Regional Preserve. And key, key, I'll key, key on the word preserve, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit. So Clayton Ranch is over 4,000 acres, located directly east and north of, of the city of Clayton, shares a boundary with Clayton Community Park on the, on, on one side and Black Diamond Mine on the other. So it's a connect, a direct connection between Clayton and Black Diamond Mines Regional Preserve. It was, it was 3,000 acres of that, 4,000 acres, was acquired using East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy money. So we have to manage it as habitat, according to the, the plan that that's been developed, to minimize impacts on the plants and the wildlife. All right. So the park district, we're soon going to initiate a process to investigate opening portions of that to public access. But there has to be a study to document the, the unique plants and wildlife on the property. And then we're also, of course, going to develop a recreation plan to see how those two things, like I said earlier, how those two things can work together. So I know staff and our staff, the staff of the two organizations have been working together a bit to try to work out something in Clayton Community Park. I'm hoping that all works out well. I don't see why it wouldn't. And, and the other thing is, once we do get in there and start enjoying that property, and it's beautiful, that recreational use cannot impact the sensitive biological resources that are there. If that happens, actually, public access could be, could be restricted. So we've got to be real careful how we do this. So our, our park planners are going to be focusing on making sure that the trail network in there is sustainable, and that there's a robust public engagement process. So what that means is, when the gates are thrown open on day one, we're just going to, there's going to be park district folks in there, in their uniforms or whatever they're going to be wearing. And they're going to be educating the folks as to what's okay and what's not. It's not your run-of-the-mill park. And what that means, I think the most important thing that you, that people are going to realize is that it's, it's no off-leash, it's not going to be an off-leash dog park like the other ones that we have. Dogs are going to be allowed. You know, if you ask some, some regulators, they'll say, well, there shouldn't be any dogs there. I, I took the, we, we were all there on a field trip, some of the district folks, they were taking me out there to show me, even though I'd been there more than they had. Anyway, I'm standing there, and I'm going, you see through those trees right there? There's houses right there. They said, you're not going to say no dogs, I mean, because that's, that's ridiculous, you know? Okay, then we'll keep them on a leash. So everybody's going to have to work together to make this be successful. And, you know, I'll do my best to, whatever I can do to, to make that. But it's a great, a great, it's going to be a great resource. You're going to be able to access it at Black Diamond Way, too, you know? So maybe we'll make some nice, nice loop runs or rides or whatever. It's going to be a great park. So speaking of Black Diamond Mine, next, or Black Diamond Trail, just in case anybody doesn't know, Black Diamond Regional Trail connects Clayton, next to Clayton Ranch and up into Black Diamond Mine. I know one of the things that was sort of embarrassing to me was this winter, it was damaged pretty badly, and it took a really long time to get it fixed. And I was making a lot of, I was making a lot of contacts to find out what was going on with that. And it was just, we all know, we all lived through it. I mean, you know what the creeks around here were looking like? Well, that trail turned into kind of a creek, if you had ever looked at it. The gully, there's a gully this deep in there, you know, just eroded. So it was like nothing anybody had ever seen. There's no way to anticipate it. And then the way that they, they only had, there was only so much resources available to restore all the trails around the district that were damaged. So they worked their way around, and they didn't get here till late, late July, if you remember. I've asked that in the future, and I think I've got agreement, that trails like that, that are located where the people live, should have a higher priority than just doing them in order counterclockwise around the district, which is kind of what they were doing. So we'll see how that goes. I'm really, I'm really, I really think it's important. People depend on that. And the, and the great thing about that trail is it has kind of a gravel rock surface on it, and it's, it's pretty much accessible even when it rains. So I, I like that idea, too, to get into the, the back country even after a rainstorm. So stay tuned. If you have any issues with it, let me know. I really depend on everybody else. Next. So finally, just some general messages for folks to keep in mind. Again, we have 25 million visits annually on all of our, on, on our parks and trails. So we ask that people cooperate and work with each other. And so here's just some graphics that show tips for the three major user groups. Hikers, stay to the right. Yield to horseback riders. And bikers, always yield to pedestrians and equestrians. Slow down around others. Stop if necessary. And call out or ring your bell when passing. Okay? And then for equestrians, we ask them to keep to the right and let trails, users know how to, how to pasture a horse safely. If you don't know what to do, just ask the rider. They'll tell you. And then, next. Wildfire safety. This is especially an issue when we get over into the Berkeley Hills with all those eucalyptus trees and the other vegetation that grows there. We have to take that seriously. And so we are actually engaged in, in wildfire protection on a year-round basis. We have a whole raft of prevention efforts that we do. We try to reduce the fuel load with, we use, we use all the major grazers. We use cattle, goats, and sheep to, to graze areas. We thin excessive growth and remove hazardous trees with, with a specialized fuel reduction crew, that that's what they do. They're just out there, you know, as much as they can to go out there and cut that stuff out. We have, we have a, our own fire department. So it has dedicated firefighters. And then we also have a whole cadre of, of employees that are generally rangers who volunteer to be on call. So we can call up, you know, dozens of firefighters if they're needed for one of these fires. We have two helicopters with firefighting capabilities. They can just drop a bucket into a pond or a lake and haul out water and take it right to where it's needed. And we also maintain four. And we also maintain four remote weather stations that monitor temperature, moisture, wind, and sort of just measure all those things and come up with a relative risk. And when the risk gets really bad, you know, we put the on-call people on alert and, you know, do a patrol. We also partner with CAL FIRE and other local agencies to quickly suppress wild landfires. One other thing I want to point out, the picture on the far right there, that yellow device, you can't tell, but that is really big. That's the size of a truck. It's a big device. It's called the Carbonator. It's nothing to do with soda. It actually enables logs that are cut, like eucalyptus logs, when we thin out the forest. We don't burn them, we don't just chip them and then have to haul them away. That machine is there. It's in Chabot Regional Park right now. It's portable, and you just drop the log in there, and there's a kind of a combustion process that goes on there. It's not burning it, doesn't release CO2 into the air, but it just reduces it to this black substance. It looks like charcoal, doesn't have any smell. And then that can be used, like our soil amendments, I think it can be used as an amendment to feed for animals. We're still working on what to do with it. We know there's some things to do with it, we just need to apply it. But that's an innovative thing that's not done very many places, but we just couldn't figure out, well, how are we going to haul away tons and tons of those eucalyptus logs without making a worst impact on the environment? So we really like volunteers, we really depend on volunteers. So there are many ways to get involved in what the park district does. For me, it was going out and building trails, that's how I got started with them. But you don't have to use manual labor. You can, well, you can do shoreline cleanups, habitat restoration, trail maintenance, as I mentioned. You can be a docent at a visitor's center. You can be an ambassador, an official park district ambassador, you wear a little kind of uniform thing, and you sit at a table at an event and talk to people about the park district. You can be on the trail safety patrol, and, you know, pick the user group that you are, and be a horse, bike, or hiker safety patrol. You can work in the Botanic Garden in Tilden, or you can even work in an archive. We have our own archive, our own historic archive, and you can do that. So lots of ways to get involved, there's the information there, how to do it. And then I'll just quickly mention, we also have the Regional Parks Foundation, which is solely dedicated to supporting the park district on things that we ordinarily wouldn't be able to accomplish. They raise money for us and do projects and programs, many, many kinds of scholarship-type things where, you know, people can get, folks can get into the parks that wouldn't be able to afford it or wouldn't have any way of doing it. The foundation does that. And finally, if the council's interested, I could make a yearly thing of this next year for an update. It would be different from this one, but I'd probably talk about more stuff than is just around here, because there's just so much, I know I would never spend an hour, but, you know, there's a lot to talk about, and I would love to do it, but whatever's available for you. I just want to kind of close with some of the, a couple of things that I'm interested in doing that are future things. And so one of them is, the Iron Horse Trail currently ends at the northern boundary of Concord. And so we have a project in the planning stages to extend the Iron Horse Trail through the wetlands, on the levees and stuff, all the way to the Benicia Bridge. And that's been in a very preliminary state. I'm really trying to get our staff to, like, kind of juice that up a little bit and get going on it, because it's going to be really a tremendous asset to be able to basically pass all the way through Contra Costa County on a separated trail. It's really going to be great. That's one thing. The other thing is, you all know Lime Ridge. In Concord, there's an opportunity to make a connection via Lime Ridge up to Mount Diablo State Park. We have a trail in our master plan that's never really been looked at, and I'm going to try to get the staff to look at it and allow another way to get up to Mount Diablo from the Concord site. So that would, those are a couple of the big things. You know, of course, Thurgood Marshall is an important one, too, but that has a lot of momentum of its own. These are things that, you know, may not have an advocate as much as there is there, so those are things that I'm interested in doing. I think COVID made it clear that East Bay residents really value being out in the open space and out on the trails. So we're working hard to, you know, make more land available for users to get out there and enjoy, and, you know, hopefully break up some of the crowding and the conflict that there is, just by diluting all the users out in a bigger area. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Questions from council?
Okay.
I just have one.
Oh, yeah.
How many are on your staff, or is it all volunteers?
On the park district staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's like 980, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, there's plenty of staff, but, you know, there's just so much to do that volunteers really lend a lot to it.
Of course.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about Clayton Ranch and the timing of what is, what the vision is on timing? And then also, I guess, do you need help from the city?
Yes, we do, and we've been, there's been some preliminary work along those lines. You know, I kind of hesitate to, in fact, I've been told not to state a year, because it's, but it's in the two-to-three-year range, I think, maybe?
I think that's fair.
Maybe three, yeah. It's not, it's not some totally, like, out-there dream, you know? We are seriously working on that, trying to make that happen. It's one of the higher parts, because we have, actually, thousands of acres of landbank property just like that that aren't open. But this one, I've been making a case for it, because it's right next to where all you folks live. It's right there, you know, nobody, you don't have to drive there, you know, it's right there. So to me, that kind of boosts up the importance of it.
And would it be, is the intent that it would be accessed when it comes to fruition through the Clayton Community Park?
That'd be one way, but you could also get in going up Black Diamond.
Black Diamond and cut across.
Turning it into, there's a, just before you go up the hill on the right, there's a gate right through there.
Okay. Excellent. No, that's great.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to say thank you, John. This was very informative, and I, my particular favorite is the Black Diamond Trail. I'm a big birder, and that trail is, and even with mudslides and whatever else, it's really...
You were up there anyway?
Terrific. Absolutely, almost every weekend. And that, the Clayton Ranch, is that Irish Canyon?
Yes.
Yes. And I did have an opportunity with the Habitat Conservancy, because I'm on the governing board, to look up and down onto it. It's stunning.
Yeah, it is.
Very exciting.
It is.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you know, Black Diamond is, I mean, I'm on that at least once a week, you know? It's just a great, I never get tired of it. And it's a pretty good challenge, isn't it?
And the end is quite a, and the end is quite a challenging trail. I think it's worth, like, five, five and a half miles one way, give or take. You go up over the hill.
Depends on where you consider the end to be. It's a couple of miles from Clayton Road up to the top, I guess.
All the way down to the, past the cemetery and then to the mine.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, that's a good question. It's less than five. But, you know, I see all different kinds of, you know, I see runners, I see walkers, I see bicyclists on that. It's a very, very useful trail to have near in your backyard.
For sure.
And you don't want to go the other way on those other guys' park.
Thank you, John.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, and with that... We repaginated to number-one reports, but I believe this is supposed to be number...
The word version of what's printed out on paper is incorrect, what's online is correct. Sorry.
Okay, perfect. All right, so next is reports. City manager?
I have no new reports.
Okay.
May I ask you one quick question, Brett, which I forgot to ask in our meeting earlier today?
Of course.
City clerk update? Do we have any news to report?
So, no, no news. It's going to be, I've talked to a variety of you, and you've asked individually, it's going to be a little bit of a long process, it's a difficult position to fill in the industry, much like engineers and accountants. Our size and scope makes it a little bit harder, frankly, as our neighbors have, you know, a bigger, I think, arena to choose from, just because of the nature of their roles. And so we have hired Regional Government Services, which is a firm that has a city clerk arm that can help us recruit and go out in the industry to pull candidates. We are trying to work through kind of the plan and what we're looking for, and reviewing the job description to make sure it is consistent with everything, since they haven't been reviewed in a long time. And so I would not suspect that we have a replacement, most likely till the end of the calendar year. That's probably best case at this point.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With that, public hearings, we do not have any. Next is action items, and this is a resolution reclassifying the maintenance supervisor position, and also, this is a long thing that I'm not going to read, but if you want to kick us off, feel free.
I will. I will kick us off, yes. Tonight, presenting with me will be Ron Burnell, our consultant on this project, and Amy Walker, who will be going over a lot of the HR personnel aspects of it. So I will just start by, again, giving an overview. When we look at the maintenance department, you know, I think it's important to remember that the city of Clayton, although small in square miles, is somewhat demanding in the type of, some of the work we have to do related to vegetation management, median management, and irrigation, and also the level of service that is currently being maintained. It is definitely significant relative to many surrounding cities in this county and neighboring counties. That's not a bad thing. It's why it is so beautiful and why, one of the reasons why Clayton is unique in many aspects relative to its partners throughout Contra Costa County. But that does come with a significant service demand. And what you're going to see today is Mr. Burnell's report is going to kind of go through his analysis of the amount of service demand required, the current staff we have to do it, and kind of the gap, and some observations and thoughts he has from the work that he's done with us. You know, I don't like to bury the lead, and so, you know, for us, there really is, you know, aging infrastructure that becomes an additional issue. And what you really will see is that, as of today, our service demand and staff hours are just not aligned. And we will be offering kind of, through the presentation, a suggestion to how to realign that a bit. It is not without its challenges for the long haul, or the mid-haul even, but there's an opportunity to maybe do a test for some one-time monies to see if this kind of approach can work, and bring it back to council at a future date to then talk about, if it does work, you know, what the future could hold for it. And so with that, if we could put the PowerPoint up... So you can go to the first slide. And I talked about this in my kind of introduction. Again, we're small relative to square miles, but it's a good service demand. And again, you'll see that staff just isn't sufficient right now with the current service demand. So we can go to the next slide. And so what you're going to notice is that the staff is currently six FTE. We do augment that with 4,000 productive hours for temporary workers. We'll talk about this probably in a little bit more detail in Mr. Burnell's section, but specifically around the temporary employees, the math, as far as the money that we have available, is around 4,600 hours that we could currently utilize in temporary employees, which is a significant reduction of almost 30% from the previous year, partially because the budget was reduced and the budget conversation, but also the cost per hour continues to rise. But we also are seeing about 10% reduction in productivity because of the transition of these temporary workers in and out, the amount of training required of staff to just get them on board, and then kind of oversight of them to get them going for the first few day or two or three that they're with us. It does really reduce our productivity, either by requiring additional staff to aid them more, or just their own productivity is limited because they're learning where, how, and what we need to do around trimming of our right-of-ways and medians and related work. And so that's an important note, because, you know, that also adds to a layer of inefficiency that I think currently has to be addressed by the current maintenance supervisor and the team. So with that, we can go to the next slide, and I will turn it over to Ron Burnell to discuss his analysis and work.
Mayor, city council, it's a pleasure to be back before you. And thank you for the opportunity just to give you a little bit of information about a project I've been working on with the city manager, related to the staffing of the Public Works Department in relationship to all the demands that they have currently. And so I worked with the maintenance supervisor on this project, tried to identify every single thing that they do on a daily basis, weekly, monthly, and annually, and to capture a baseline so that we would have something to talk about that is not exact, because there aren't records kept on a daily basis of the time these tasks take, but it's the maintenance supervisor's best estimate of the time that's involved here. And so, listing all of these items and trying to establish timelines to them and what they involved, we came up with about 18,500 total hours of demand in the city of Clayton for all public works-related functions. And that's everything from administrative functions all the way to working on response to catastrophic events like the flooding we had this last winter. And so with that, the six FTEs, when you take the 2,080 hours per year that they work, 40 hours times 52 weeks, and you back off all of the holidays and vacations and all the other time off, it works out to about 1,500 hours a year of time that the workers are actually working. And so multiplying that out, that comes out to about 9,000 hours. So to supplement that, as city manager stated, we have a maintenance contract with workers.com that we have $140,000. Clayton has $140,000. I still say "we" because I feel like I'm part of Clayton. Clayton has $140,000 budgeted this year for that item. As the city manager stated, there was previously up to $160,000 when it was $27 an hour. We now have $140,000 at $30 an hour. So the number of hours have reduced for that function. And so what we find ourselves in is a deficit of about 5,500 hours, based upon this analysis. And one thing I just want to mention is, this analysis doesn't take into account the catastrophic flooding that occurred, for example, last winter, just because we don't have a way of determining how often that will happen, or how much time will be spent when it does happen. So that would just be added on to whatever these numbers are currently if we did find ourselves in that sort of a situation again. But so the, so the net result of it, when we take the 4,000 hours of the contract time away, is about 5,500 deficit hours. And if we divide that by the 1,500 hours per person of working time, it's about 3.7 full-time equivalent employees that we would need to come up with just to meet the total demand of time for the Public Works Department. So that's an overview of how I went about approaching this. I did work with the maintenance supervisor on these numbers a couple times, just to make sure that they were conservative and they weren't overreaching in what was being, and one of the areas, as an example, is just emails and phone calls. There, as you can see, there's anywhere from a range of time that the maintenance supervisor will be answering phone calls. And so we took what we felt was a conservative number, because if you look at just admin time that has been used this last year, it's almost 1,000 hours of just admin time only, phone calls, emails, staff reports, interacting with staff, things like that. So that's an overview of what we have as a service hour deficit. If we could go to the next slide, please. I'd like to talk a little bit now about the fact that when we have a deficit in working in a community, it becomes cumulative. It's not just one year you have a deficit and then you start over the next year. The things that aren't being taken care of now require additional work, additional attention, infrastructure demands become even more. And so the longer that a deficit in time that's available to do tasks occurs, the more it costs down the road to address that. And I just want to let folks know, you know, you all know me as my, as your interim city manager. I put on my Public Works Director, City Engineer hat, which I did most of my career when I was working on this, so that was more of the lens I was looking at this through, as opposed to... So that was more of the lens I was looking at this through as opposed to a city manager lens. And just to let you know that I was looking at it from that standpoint and trying to establish what are some things that can maybe be done to address this. And so if we could, as it says up there, the service hour deficit, we have mainline breaks, we have the maintenance that has to occur, we have trees that are growing that are not maintained on an annual basis. We know that we have V-ditch issues with drainage. We have creek issues, which this year resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars of damage that impacted the community and the cost of doing things. So just a lot of different issues that are coming at the Public Works Department in trying to address what's happening. If we can go to the next slide, please. So just a couple of takeaways from this. These will probably seem very obvious, but I think they're worth stating. We don't have enough staff to cover the amount of work that's necessary in the city of Clayton currently, and the level of service that you're currently seeing and experiencing is a direct result of that. So I know that there's people that would like to see a more regular schedule that we could stick to when we're doing work out there, but the fact that the public work staff is going from fire to fire makes it impossible to unplug the toilet at Clayton Community Park while you're out there trying to trim the bushes on Clayton Road. And so that's just the reality of where the staff finds themselves right now, trying to deal with the situation that we're in. So you have a lack of staffing. You also have a situation, as I mentioned before, where the resources are decreasing by virtue of the part-time help is becoming less each year by virtue of it increasing in cost per hour. And it's also dependent upon the amount of money that the city council wants to commit to doing that. We also have the fact that the aging infrastructure is a major issue. We've known that firsthand with all of the water line breaks, the mainline breaks that we see happening, and the fact that Clayton Community Park has a good example. That mainline system, although there is going to be some improvements done to help shut off the water when there is a break, that is going to continue to deteriorate and get worse over time. And so there needs to be solutions and investment in infrastructure in order to make sure that those types of problems do not just keep getting worse and worse and take away more time, more of staff time. The degradation of the infrastructure requires Clayton to seriously consider setting aside resources for replacement and for deferred maintenance. And just like if we bought a police car today for $50,000 and it has a 10-year life expectancy and it's going to cost $80,000 to replace in 10 years, we should be setting aside $8,000 a year in order to make that purchase at that time. And that's true of all the infrastructure in the city of Clayton. And one of the big ones, I think, that isn't seen is things like buildings. And we maintain this library here, our city hall, our maintenance facility. We have buildings in the city of Clayton that require maintenance on an ongoing basis, and just like our own homes are getting older and requiring more cost and more time. I think it would be prudent for the city to consider contracting out with a professional landscape maintenance company to address the main arterials, the roads, the median landscaping, the side landscaping, to free up some of the time that staff is spending on that and be able to spend it in some of these other areas that are not being addressed currently. And so that, I know, is one of the recommendations of the city manager to look into with this agenda item tonight, is the possibility of going out for an RFP, for a contractor to bid on that, or contractors to give a price. I think the other thing that that would give an advantage to for Clayton is the fact that there are assessment districts that are coming, and one in particular that are coming due in a couple of years, and it would give an idea of what it would cost a contract for the work, as opposed to right now, I don't think there's a really good idea of what that would take. So I think that would be a recommendation that would behoove Clayton to look into. And then finally, I think, finally, two more things. One is just the severe storms that we saw last year. I don't think that that, I think that we may see that more frequently, and what it's going to do, an example of the Cardenay Trail and Mount Diablo Creek, is if we had another storm like we had this year, you would probably end up with no trail next to the big oak tree, and possibly that oak tree being in trouble. And so the idea that we need to plan for those events occurring and not just hope that they don't happen. So I think that's something where there needs to be proactive steps taken to prepare for that as well as we can. And then just that, I want to mention that the organizational assessment that was done back in May by MRG, I think that their assessment of the Public Works Department was that it needed a Public Works manager and a senior maintenance worker. They identified two positions. The item before you tonight is taking the supervisor position and reassigning that to a superintendent position. And so really, that, I just want to mention, that doesn't add another person to the staffing of Public Works. You still have six FTEs. And so there still is going to be a need, regardless of contract work that's done, to supplement that with staff that's going to be able to help support the contractors, do this additional work, and also just make sure that Clayton has the resources necessary to continue to be the beautiful community that it is. So with that, I'm going to turn this back over to the city manager and let him and Amy take it from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and he'll be around for questions as well, council. So if we go to the next slide, you know, Ron really touched on this point. My recommendation to council today is to do that RFP, as Ron articulated, for right-of-ways, medians, irrigation from the valve forward. Additionally, we would, you know, as part of that RFP, we would split the city into zones, we would create schedules that those RFP, the awarded RFP company or companies potentially would adhere to. We could make that public. It really allows us to have clarity with that work, because again, they're not doing everything else in the city. They're only focusing on what they're contracted for. And we would then move our current staff kind of internal to parks, to, as Ron talked about, mainline breaks, to the facility deferred maintenance, to looking at, you know, all kinds of other areas related to curb painting and, you know, streetlights and things that really just cannot, because of the deficit, staff cannot get to on a significant level. And I think the combination of the two is a really good direction moving us forward. It is not, as I said earlier, it is not without solving one problem and creating another in the sense that if we do this one-year process, if council approves it, this is not, as I talked about in the staff report, it isn't an ongoing funding stream we have currently. So it would be a proof of concept, which would be great. I think, you know, nine, 10 months in, we come back to council and say, we think it's working, now what? And so that is something that's still out there, even if we do this, as, you know, I want to create expectations, setting for council and the community is, this may be a great approach for the long haul, but we're still without a funding stream to do it as of today. And so that really will have to be a point of conversation as we move forward, if we do this, if it's successful, that, you know, we still have to have that conversation months down the line. Now I'll turn it over to Amy to talk about the org changes and related to the maintenance supervisor position.
Good evening, Mayor Juan and council members. The requested reclassification of the maintenance supervisor position to the maintenance superintendent is intended to work in conjunction with these contracted landscaping agreements that we're proposing. This position will be responsible for contract negotiations, contract management, and the ongoing management of the team that already exists. Additionally, this position reports directly to the city manager. It currently does, and it would continue to do so. And in evaluating this entire process, what we realized is, this is a position that is currently non-exempt. And what that means is, this position currently is entitled to receiving overtime compensation. What we would like to do is to change this model, to make this position an exempt position, which is commensurate with the other positions that are currently reporting to the city manager. All of these positions are overseeing departments. This position already functions in that way, but it's more appropriate to reclass this so that, so it's a salaried position, essentially. Let's see here. Also, this position is currently already performing a high level of administrative function. And in evaluating this and talking with staff, it's apparent that when a position like this is already 70% or more functioning in an administrative capacity, it's important to make sure that we're also appropriately classifying that job, so it should be a salaried position. If you could advance to the next slide, please. One thing I failed to mention is that in this, we're looking for succession planning. So when we're making these decisions, none of these are in a vacuum. We're trying to look at a holistic approach, not only what Mr. Burnell spoke about, but also making sure that when we're looking at all the different positions in the city, that we're really aligning the functions, and are they still applicable today? Is the salary commensurate? And if you look at, in your staff report, you'll see 10 different positions that we compared it to. For simplicity, I've only provided three of them here today. This request for a change in classification and in compensation is still, the request is for it to receive a compensation that is still less than all of its 10 comparables in other agencies. So we're trying to right-size the city's job description salaries. If you could advance to the next slide, please. Related to this department's organizational structure, there are additional needs that I'd like to bring to your attention for future consideration. That's not for tonight, but just to plant the seed so we can have further discussions about this. One is for the need for an additional senior maintenance worker to aid in succession planning and adequate field supervision. And the second is the need for a policy regarding standby pay. The current practice is for the maintenance supervisor to basically answer the phone at all times during after-hours. And oftentimes, this individual is going out, calling, being called out after-hours. What we would like to see is for that model to change, for us to build a policy for standby compensation, and to have a recurring schedule so that all of the different maintenance workers are on-call and prepared to respond to after-hours calls. What that's also going to do is to shift what was currently, or what has currently been overtime hours for the supervisor is no longer going to be occurring, and hours that would typically be spent on paying the supervisor would then be shifted to the maintenance workers, obviously at a lower compensation rate for them to respond to those calls, but for there to be some predictability to that as well.
So if we could go to the next slide, and I'm just going to kind of wrap it up. You know, in very brief summary, you know, you heard we're 5,500 hours short under the current service level. And I think if there is ever a desire to go greater, you know, know that that would require more as well. This is just to meet kind of the current demand and service level that we believe is required in Clayton. Again, I would like to conduct an RFP to go out and see what the market would be. We want to reclassify that maintenance supervisor to the maintenance superintendent for all the reasons Ms. Walker outlined. And we're asking today for $400,000 use of pandemic relief reserve to fund the one-year trimming agreement. On that note, you know, that is an assessment that staff has done based on what we think will come back from those RFPs, because Clayton is a little isolated in geographical nature. And when we saw this with, I think, Diablo Estates issues, with trying to get someone for a small but still meaningful job there, there is concerns from Mr. Burnell, Mr. Warburton, and myself, that this bid could go kind of a few different directions. And so I say that because if council would rather me come back with a specific direct amount, once we get the RFP bids, instead of kind of putting a placeholder in now, I have no problem with that. It's really council's pleasure. But we wanted to give you an idea and reserve it if needed, so you had an expectation of order of magnitude, if nothing else, moving forward. But if council has different desires to bring back the dollar figure with the contract when that happens, I'm fine with that as well. So with that, Ms. Walker, Mr. Burnell, and myself are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you to everyone, especially, it's good seeing you again, Mr. Burnell, and thank you to everyone who, I know a lot of work goes into this. Questions from council?
I just have a feeling that some of our residents would be curious where their landscape maintenance district fee has gone for the past several years, and why we're in a position right now that we'd be asking for more from our reserves. So if you can give us an explanation of how that is not available, that they thought that it might be, and where it's going, and why this is important.
Yeah, we get about 1.3, 1.2 and some change million from that parcel tax. Part of it pays for the staff work that goes into it, any contracts related to, any applicable areas related to that landscape maintenance district. As mentioned by Mr. Burnell, the cost of doing business is going up with staff, the cost is going up with contracts, the cost is going up with the amount of mainline breaks and repairs throughout that area of service. And unfortunately, and Mr. Burnell noted this, we have not had a proactive approach in Clayton, for at least the past that I can look at. And part of that is, we have not dedicated funds specifically to address facility needs or other larger capital-related needs specifically to this area. We've done it a little bit more pag-o. And so I think what it's done is left an infrastructure that continues to age without a clear repair plan, staff costs that continue to go up, and also the last few years of various weather events has, I think, created issue with pre-emergent being kind of removed because the rains were so heavy, so the things that typically helped keep down the vegetation issues. Those preventative measures have not been as successful because of the amount of rain. It's also enhanced growth significantly in an area with a lot of open space and vegetation. I'm very used to this issue. The city Bonita is 25% open space, and so I know it's very costly and can be problematic from an operating standpoint. And I think we're seeing just kind of the maturity of the city now kind of hit us in dealing with the maintenance side, and that revenue stream not built. I won't compare it to the GAD because I don't think it's, the drastic nature of it is not as great, but a similar issue in that it is not set to really address the current service levels moving into the future.
Thank you.
I just want to ask a question, kind of a follow-up to that. So the 1.2, 1.3 in the landscape maintenance district would be in addition to the 400,000 that we would be going out on an RFP?
That's correct, yeah. This would be really a specifically, you know, and I, again, use that as our best estimate, but, you know, this could be less, and we could be smiling potentially, or it could be the other direction too. And so, but yes, it would be in addition to. You know, we continue to look at ways of being efficient in that area, like all areas of the city that we're doing, but there's just so much aging. I mean, we see it in the Grove, we see it all over the city, and I, that is hard to get ahead of without resources, to be quite honest. And so, but specifically to your question, council member, yes, it would be in addition to the normal money coming in from the parcel tax.
Thank you. I have a whole list of questions. So I'm going to keep going, and then I'll take a break at some point. So, and Brett and I had a terrific meeting earlier today. He answered a lot of these, but just to get some clarification, where did the $400,000 RFP estimate come from? Can you explain?
Yeah, so we looked at the amount of staff we'd have to add to really do this total workload reasonably, and that was about four FTE. And so the cost of that, on average, would be about $450,000, $460,000. We then looked at the workload we think would happen from the zoning and, you know, phasing in this, you know, to do twice a year, which is our current standard for all the medians and right-of-ways in areas throughout the city. We thought that a consultant or a contract staff service provider would be able to do it slightly less expensive than us, and so we, that's what we got with the $400,000 level. We kind of settled on that number. Again, knowing that because we've never bid anything like that here, it really is a difficult estimate for us to do, but we wanted to kind of give a reasonable, again, order of magnitude for council. So when we do come back with the results, it's not potentially a massive shock. So when we do come back with the results, it's not potentially a massive shock if it's slightly more, slightly left, but in the ballpark. But as I said in my opening remarks, if council wants to deal with the money side of it when we bring back the contract or the RFP results, then that's fine too. I mean, this isn't a need to do that. One doesn't need to happen before the other. The RFP can happen irregardless of, or regardless of the dollar figure of the budget.
And theworkers.com, $140,000. The other thing we talked about is that it might not be diminished immediately because of this RFP, but perhaps in fiscal year 2024, 2025?
Yeah, it would be, if we, if council approved this approach and we went forward with it, it would be my expectation that once council, when we come back to council and said, "It's worked," and you all say, "Okay, let's do it ongoing and we find a funding string," part of that conversation would be, "We will reduce theworkers.com to a small level just to deal with other related projects," but it could be rather significant, more to the tune of probably a $100,000 reduction. And so if you take whatever that number ends up being for this contract and minus 100,000, that's probably close to the delta we're talking about on an ongoing basis, but that would be an approach we would take to help, yes.
And then just going to the new maintenance superintendent position, I have a couple of questions around that. So the job description is slightly different than your current job description as maintenance And so I have two questions around that. A, are you comfortable with your new job description? And B, my other concern was if our maintenance staff now is not going to really be doing any of the trimming and the other work that they, landscaping work they've been doing, do we have the right team in place to be doing all of the maintenance detail that we haven't gotten to? Do we have the skill set, or do we need more tools or training or preventative maintenance software? I don't know, I'm just throwing out some things.
So I'd like to answer the first part. The incumbent is currently already performing this function as a superintendent, already functions at that level. In my discovery in my new position as HR manager, I have found that there are many job descriptions that lack clarity or even updated. You know, we have things that say, mention typewriters, things like that. So I've got a pretty big undertaking, and this is just one small step of right-sizing the entire organization and making sure we really have clarity around all of our job descriptions. But what happened with this particular position is the individual in the position has continued to take on more responsibility and as part of the executive team, already functions as a department head, is part of our weekly executive team meetings, is, you know, my cohort with Climat Tech, things like that, is, is performing high-level administrative functions and providing mentorship and guidance to the staff. And so in my evaluation of several different employees, this is one area where I thought this was, it took greater precedence than some of the others. But this is, again, just one of many job descriptions that we want to get some clarity around so that we're really current in our practices.
And I'm not surprised about that at all. I just wanted to ask that question. And you mentioned Climat Tech, which was one of my other questions. Will our project agreement with Climat Tech in any way alleviate some of...
No, unfortunately, it won't. No, but the incumbent does provide a significant amount of insight about the existing infrastructure in our community, so, but that would be the extent of that.
And the other part of my question was, do we have an existing team then, the remaining maintenance team, to handle the other maintenance?
So on that piece, I would say yes, but I think with any unit, I'm always striving for additional training and cross-training, and Mr. Warburton believes in that as well. And so, but I will tell you, as you, in my experience in overseeing this in a variety of functions, one of them being in a jail, I wasn't in the jail, I worked in the jail. You know, it is important, as you get any vacancy in your team, to evaluate the need relative to the team as a whole. And so Mr. Warburton and I will continue to do that. If we were to happen a vacancy through normal occurrences, we would sit down and say, "Okay, what skill sets do we have that are more prominent with the team, what are less?" And then try to tailor that maintenance worker recruitment to probably fill a better gap in the future, knowing we, well, if this continues as be our normal course of business, we will become more focused in different areas than we traditionally have been in Clayton in the least recent past.
Thank you, Brett. And my very last question is on the, for now, the timetable of the RFP. So I guess depending on our outcome this evening, but when would we hope to have potentially a new landscaping company in place?
Typically, an RFP from beginning to end can take a few months to really lock it in. Part of it is just getting the solicitation out there on the street and making sure it's hitting various publications specific to the industry that we're seeking. And then, secondly, there's the process of evaluating those proposals. Sometimes that can require several different staffs interviews, things like that. And then, once we had what we felt was a proposal that we wanted to bring to council, we would then ask for direction on proceeding with a contract because it does exceed the city manager's authority.
Thank you.
I had a few questions. I could piggyback off of a couple. When you talk about position classification and that essentially we're already doing the work and we meet the criteria, what's preventing us from reclassifying the position to exempt already?
What's preventing us from?
Yes.
I guess I'm not understanding your question.
If the role is performing work that, you know, the IRS test of what, 27 criteria for exempt versus non-exempt, if we're already meeting them and we think that that is a defensible position, why wouldn't we, is that...
We're asking for it to be...
Let me, let me rephrase.
Okay.
Is, do we have the ability to reclass the position without making the wage changes if they're already doing the work?
I, I don't think that's a fair argument, especially when I did the class and comp comparison with other agencies and all of the functions that are being performed by comparable positions. I would say that this position is grossly underpaid, honestly. And so, but here's part of the...
But that's not my question, though.
Okay. So part of the issue is that currently this position is earning overtime at approximately $10,000 a year. So that overtime goes away, but it's essentially now baked into this new number so that we're accurately and fairly compensating this individual.
Okay. And I didn't see that in the staff report, like that analysis of current to proposed? Is that, did I miss it?
It's not in there. We talk about the fact that it's a cumulative, you know, for the remaining months that we would do this, it's about a $16,000 increase. But I talk about the fact that the overtime goes away, and that was part of what was taken into consideration of the analysis of the net impact that this will have, because right now essentially the overtime is a given at the rate, if not more, based on everything that I've seen that we would, that we would have. And so really, base to base, if you look at printed job spec, I believe it's about $96,000 is the top end of the current salary and $119 and some change is the proposed top step of the new salary. The problem is, it's skewed because essentially this person currently does $7,000 to $10,000 a year, and I think that will only increase in what I've seen and the amount of issues we have. And so, base to base, we're really talking about it apples to apples. We have to consider that overtime as part of what the role would do. And that's why we're talking about when we make it exempt, that's going away. And so essentially, that, that becomes their starting point in this conversation as far as analysis. And to your point, Mayor, about, you know, could we make this current position class exempt? That is the problem, is that the person is working out of their class already. That job spec is not sufficient for the work that they're doing. What we're saying is they're actually already doing the superintendent role. And in my experience, that out-of-class percentage that was identified and in talking to our consultant that helped us with this, I mean, there is a real need to move to a job spec and class that is more appropriate in our industry that reflects the work that's being done.
There's a secondary component to this too, though, is that in looking at all of our job descriptions throughout the city, we're trying to make sure that we're building in succession plans. So should the individual who currently occupies this position retire or, or seek employment elsewhere, we would not be able to fill this position based on the current salary and the expectations of the job.
Okay. No, that's great, thank you. I guess, yeah, typically when we've done reclassifications of this nature, we see a before and after so that we could actually look at it rather than, I mean, we can talk about it in broad terms, but I would expect...
Point taken.
...we would see that type saying, "Here's what it is." And I know that a lot of us, a component is overtime, so it's variable, but we have history, so we can look at. And I, I think, I heard something that you said, I just want to clarify. When you said the 15-ish thousand delta, but is that a, is that for the remainder number of months in the year, or is that an annualized figure?
That's the remainder of the months of the year.
So what's the annualized figure?
With this benefits. So...
Because I think it's a little misleading to think it's 15 for us, because I was under the impression that that was the delta, but it doesn't seem like it.
I believe I said the current remainder in months in the staff report. So I was clear it was only to the year. If we look at future, if we add in the overtime, I think you're looking at something that is, with benefits, is probably closer to 19.5, we'll call it, maybe 20, annualized basis delta.
And that's because this is the fiscal year and we've only expended a couple of months.
You got it.
Okay, so 20-ish...
Yep, correct.
Thousand.
Yep.
And that's all in?
All in, yeah. It ultimately depends year to year if the, how that goes up based on cowpers and everything else, but, but yeah, generally that, that's a good number.
Okay. And then, Ms. Walker, you had mentioned something, and I wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. These, this item here with the reclassification and then the approval request, those are done in the same item, is one contingent on the other? Like, for example, I think the, some of the, some of the duties that were listed in the updated job description that was in the agenda report, talk about some of the contract maintenance and things that you would expect with the subsequent work. Would you see these as depend, as a dependency?
Okay. What I think you're asking me is, well, let me back up. So at the beginning, I was explaining that part of this is part of the bigger discussion that we had also with Mr. Bernal. So we're trying to make sure that if we are going to proceed with this, I'll call it a pilot test for lack of a better phrase, to see if this contracting out is going to be a viable option, we definitely need for this position to be overseeing all of that contract management.
And if not?
Well, if we're not proceeding with contracting, I mean, if we're not proceeding with contracting and we're not going to increase staff, then we're going to have to lower the expectations of how the city looks.
Okay, but, so I guess, let me, let me rephrase. Is, do you see, is reclassifying this position dependent on the $400,000 request?
I wouldn't say it's dependent on, I would say it's in conjunction. Either way, it's my opinion that this position should be reclassed. If we're not going to proceed with contracting, then we have to look at additional staffing. And when you look at fully weighted with benefits, the cost can be quite exorbitant.
For sure, but I guess that, yeah, I was mostly focusing on...
No, it's not contingent. I should answer that. No, it's not contingent on that, but I would say it's very much interrelated.
Okay. And then you had mentioned, you know, we, I think in the agenda report, we call it a proof of concept or we call it a pilot. What are we trying to prove? Like, what question are we trying to answer?
Yeah, so the question we're trying to answer is, can we try to use contracted services for the significant role of what we do here in, in the city with maintenance, with trimming and medians and some irrigation from Valve Up, to allow the current staff levels in the short run to address other deferred needs throughout the city? And can that be a model that then we look to sustain in the future for a couple of reasons? One, again, I think we have, the industry as a whole has a hard time recruiting these positions now moving forward, and so going to a contracted model for a significant portion of what I'll say the community sees day-to-day allows us, regardless of the staffing issues we may have, to at least let that continue forward, much like you saw with HDL, business licenses. And so we're trying to move to areas of the city strategically that we can use contracts so staff are, as I've talked about before, enhancing other areas of what they need to do, but aren't the baling wire and duct tape that holds it together. And I'll be very frank with this council, right now, the team has worked so hard that it's baling wire and duct tape, and it is not sustainable. As I said in the staff report, it's sprinters running a marathon. And so we're trying to see if this approach, A, we have the demand from a contracting standpoint in the community. Do we get the bids to be able to do it? Can they, through the public schedule we put out, can vendors that we do get, are they qualified enough to maintain it over time in doing this? I mean, just because we get someone that places a bid doesn't mean it actually ends up being a good thing, and that could create issues for us that we need to evaluate. And then does it meet, and this is subjective, the beautification or service demand that the community currently expects? And were we able then to transition that staff to do other deferred things? If those are all kind of yeses, some quantitative, most qualitative, to be frank, then I would say it's a success, and then the conversation with council would be how we fund it in the future. That's what, that's what I would be trying to achieve.
Yeah, and I think, I get, I think I take your point, but I guess what, the way that I'm thinking about it is, at the end of this, either that will, those answers will be yes, or they'll be no, right? If the answers are no, then I think the, I think the most likely response would be then we need to pay, we need to like, add more money. If enough money that we're putting on it doesn't get us what we want, then I don't think a viable solution is more and more money. And, because eventually, I don't think it's really a question. If we pay enough, we will get the level of service that we're looking for. And so I guess, I think the answer is already clear, and it's not necessarily needed to do a proof of concept. And what happens is if the, if we do this work and everything is happy path and it looks great, you know, I think you set yourself up for, well, you have no other choice. And I guess that's the thing that, that I take from some of this, is that it calls, it calls out a few areas, like in the presentation, it called out the idea that, I forget what, it was a lead, maintenance worker was necessary, right? It called out that we need to talk about on-call pay, or is that what you call it, on-call pay?
On-call or standby?
Standby pay, that's what you call it, that's right. And it calls out that those are areas that we identify but we're not doing now. And it feels a lot like a piecemeal approach rather than a holistic view that says, this is the whole package. And rather than, you know, it just, it doesn't feel, I'm not necessarily a fan of, and I guess I am, I'm really against making decisions on a piecemeal basis. I'd rather look at things holistically so that we know what we're deciding on, so that each step doesn't result in a fait accompli where you have to get to the end anyways, and so that we would look at everything together and make a more informed decision on how to proceed.
Part of why it's, the way, the way I presented it is because I need to, I personally need to take a phased approach because I really don't have the bandwidth to pull together the entire policy, all the things that I see need to happen. I've got a laundry list of them, but this is the first step in the process. So in, in the spirit of being transparent, I wanted to at least apprise you that that is the, the next step in my thought process is currently, we have an individual who has a phone on him all the time that rings after-hours, weekends, nights, that sort of thing. And then that person either has to make the decision right then to go out and respond or try to solicit someone to come in on off-hours. We want to help this individual build a process by which there's a rotation, that there's something already, it's going to probably need to be a side letter to the MOU about the standby pay. So it was a lot more complex to try to pull all of that together to accomplish this.
Now, when I get the prioritization, I think, I think I can separate the position reclassification with the other contract work because it does sound like that's something that, as you say, is more... with the other contract work, because it does sound like that's something that, as you say, is more, more top of, top of the list when it comes to priority. So that seems, that seems like a reasonable approach. But when we're talking about, I mean, I guess the $400,000, what percent? So I guess I'm kind of moving off the position topic a little bit.
So if I could just answer your question though related to piecemealness, I, I don't see it the same in that we did an analysis that showed gapping. One approach is to add four staff that cost more and have ongoing increases that are less manageable. When I say we do an RFP, it's because it gives us a sense of what it would cost to do that. And my recommendation, I guess, and I wouldn't characterize it if we just keep throwing money at it. At some point, the conversation becomes, is this something we can afford? Or if significant reductions in service delivery to what we have from a revenue standpoint is where we need to go. I think those are the two questions. We wanted to do a one-year test to see if this was even viable from an operating standpoint. When we solve for that, the question becomes, I think, yes, the community may say, this is great, and, and then it's council's decision of how to fund it. Or it's council's decision to say, you know what, we would like to fund it at work, but we don't have the resources, and unfortunately, we're going to have to go backwards. I mean, I think that's a reasonable approach to take, and it allows us to show if we even can do it. The flip side is, we can, you know, the flip side is just moving forward as we are means service delivery has to go down. I cannot continue to work a unit with 5,500-hour deficits and try to maintain what's happening today. I mean, we've reached the point of impasse with that. And so that's where I don't see it as piecemeal, but rather testing to then come to a place of conversation with council to either find a way, meaning money from somewhere else that I think is less likely and/or other revenue alternatives, or service has to go backwards significantly and that expectation be clear to the community.
Yeah, I mean, to your question about can we fund this operationally, I mean, we know the answer is no, we can't. Like, this is not something that can be funded operationally, that's why you've identified it as a one-time.
Correct. Under today's revenue, that's correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, and that's, that's another thing that I notice is that we are presenting one thing without the, without any other options, right? Like, as you say, we can appropriate one-time money to do this as a, to see if this is enough. It, I don't know if it will be, it may, who knows? But that the alternative isn't presented. And I think that is important in any kind of holistic discussion to see like, this is what we are suggesting, here are other alternatives, there's no other alternatives presented.
So as we talk about it, my recommendation would be, as I said, not to do the staff, because that's more expensive long-term. So that alternative isn't there. The other alternative, which we can talk about, is a significant service demand reduction. And that means, you know, we probably go to one-time-a-year trimming, if not less, and we don't deal with issues like mainline breaks day of, we shut them off, and it could be days and days that go by. I mean, a lot will change in that approach. My recommendation, and why I brought it the way I did with staff, is to take this year beta test to see if we can find another way to achieve that objective, knowing we are going to have some delta we have to talk about, and then let us talk about the delta with the community and see if council or the community has a desire to move forward with it, and does that raise the level of prioritization to do that? I think that's where we wanted to take it with this way. The alternative is simply, we are going to do a lot less. I mean, that is...
And I think that sounds scary, but I think that the work necessary to describe what that is, like, I, this is, I appreciate the report that Mr. Burnell prepared, because it is in line with what I was, what we had talked about earlier in the year. But it, the thing that I look at is, it, it doesn't have the alternative piece. And what you're saying is, well, then we'd have to do this. Yes, we would, I agree. It's a question of what is that? How do we prioritize those activities among the litany of activities that we've seen? And where, if the answer is, if the answer is no, we don't want to do that, then we would look to staff to say, hey, this is what has to happen if we do not. Because I think that presents a more fair picture, rather than, than the only thing being presented is we need to spend $400,000.
But I think the difficulty in maintenance, in my experience, is that there are urgent issues that pop up when mainline breaks and things like that happen, that we can delay for days, but we can't not deal with them. And we, so when we create a prioritization list on what we wouldn't do, separate from when you're talking about a library that would cut hours, or a police force that would have less people on shift, or a fire station that would be browned out, or, you know, anything like that, it's a lot more difficult because we're dealing with, in many cases, living, growing things or safety issues at parks. And so I, that's where I go, it would be less, and we would come with maybe broad strokes, but I don't ever think we'd get to this detailed prioritization list, except we dramatically would reduce everything we're doing and almost focus on the most basic core functions. And I guess my pause is because we've done an analysis with MRG, a consultant and expert that says you got, have issues and you have less staff. We've done an analysis with the Public Works Director Consultant in Ron Burnell that says you're 5,500 hours short. The alternative we know is significantly less. And staff is trying to present a somewhat dynamic solution to try to achieve the objective to at least get us to a future conversation to see if this can even work. And so I'm unclear what the next steps would be if all of that is not sufficient to come to some decision point. I guess I'm a little unclear on what, what else we need to do so.
Yeah, and I would, I would go back to the same. I think that understanding the holistic view is really important, especially like, I don't know, I guess, from a basic perspective, what do we spend in maintenance on an annualized basis? And what percent of an increase does this represent?
I would have to look up specifically, but I would say you're probably looking at this being somewhere in the, you know, 10 to 20% of, of the increase if we're including, if we're including just the general fund, if we include both the landscape maintenance district and the general fund, you're probably a little bit around 15% increase in total.
So $400,000 represents approximately...
I mean, I'm going off my head on thinking of 1-3 and then what their budget is, and so it's probably roughly, you know, 12 to 15% increase. But I think the amount it's going up in percentage, in my opinion, is less important than truly the service demand conversation. If we want to maintain it at today's level, I mean, this is from my opinion with the experts behind me, that this is the base way we can do it at a minimum. The next alternative is to add four staff, which is more expensive, at least on the surface that we think, and difficult to recruit. And then the third option is a service demand reduction. I mean, that's really where we're at. And so when we talk about alternatives, I mean, those are the three. I don't see another road to take frankly, to move forward in a path with one way or another with this.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess I find that a little odd. I mean, you, you're, I think there's an in-between, or there could be an in-between. I don't know if that's the right answer, but it's not zero or four. The answer could be somewhere in between, but we're not being presented with what that represents. And then the, I would think that the, the eschewing of a prioritization makes it difficult to say that not, not everything has equal weight. And so understanding what the weight of the things are helps in evaluating the level of funding that you would dedicate to those items.
I think there are a variety of things you could do. Sure, you could go to smaller contracts, but I mean, I think, I, it's not my responsibility, I think, to come out with 10 different things. I'm saying staff has evaluated this with experts, and this is what we recommend the best path is. If council has another direction, I'm happy to hear that, and then come back to you with something different. Again, I think in maintenance of a city as a whole, there are so many interconnectedness pieces of it. I find it hard to believe we're going to be able at the council to prioritize in a way that isn't going to have significant unintended consequences to things that are connected. So to say, for example, trimming and medians take the highest priority, we may end up with significant other issues, and then what are we doing, right? And so that's where I say that it's really an area that needs to have flexibility. And by kind of taking away the variable of trimming and medians to a contractor, I'm allowed more flexibility with the team, being away from that, to address those issues, to look at preventative maintenance. I, I, I'm, I just don't think we're going to get to this prioritization which is going to really be able to address your concerns, Mayor, is where I'm concerned about coming back with something different.
Okay. I can shift gears for a little bit then. Like, when we look at, sorry, can't read it. When we look at page forty, page forty-five of the, of the PDF, this is a little bit, the narrative that is after the charts. It talks about the summary analysis, and this piece, I get that it is summary, but it, there isn't detail here that kind of helps give context or color to what is being described. For example, like, we say that there's 5,500, we have a 5,500-hour shortfall, and I think that, that takes, that is what is number one and number two are addressing. But we don't talk about what we're not doing. Is there a sense of like the things, and I think that is, I think that is similar to number three as well. I think one, two, and three are all somewhat related.
I'll ask Mr. Burnell to come up and I think help answer that, and I could add some more. I mean, I think the list is significant. You know, I've described a lot of what has been done over the last decade plus as we've been putting paint on a dry-rotted house. I use that figuratively and literarily sometimes, and I think it's similar here. I think you have irrigation issues, you have park maintenance issues, you have park facility issues, you have lighting issues, you have street lamp issues, but I'll let Mr. Burnell and his expertise talk a little bit more about it.
Sure.
So Mayor, the, can you repeat the question specifically?
So we're identifying, I applaud the work. I think that you identified eighteen-five hours of, you know, total body. And then we did some math, and we came to the deficit being about 5,500 hours. So my question is really, if it, if, if what it really takes is eighteen-five and we are short 5,500, what are we not doing that's on this list?
So, so I, I think...
It's hard, because that's a level of granularity, right? So I know I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but I guess my point is, when we talk about broad strokes, you come up with a big total, right? And then we can easily add up the people, which I think there's some math issues here, but regardless, the, at the long of the curve is, this would indicate that we are not doing, I'm trying to do math in my head very quickly, twenty-eight to twenty, I don't know, something like that, percent of the work that we've identified is not getting done. That's fairly significant, so I would say it should be obvious what we're not doing, right? And, but, you know, the largest item that's identified here, over 50% of the hours is trimming, right? So if we're going to outsource all the trimming, you know, I think we said if 5,500 hours at $400,000 is $72 an hour. So something, I'm trying to like figure out how to, how to contextualize the body of work that we've identified, the amount that we say that we're short, and where that's showing up in reality.
And I think, to your point about it being granular and not being out in the field with the workers and knowing exactly what they are and aren't getting done, I can use just an example that I'm aware of, for example, the Keller House. The Keller House had a, had a column fall down and basically laid there for three months or so during the winter. And it's still, it still probably hasn't been addressed properly, right? It still should have been, something more should have been done. And I think that the solution is that folks are going to move out of it, we're not going to use it anymore. But I think that would be the type of example of things where there's infrastructure, important pieces of property that are just deteriorating, and we're doing nothing to even just shore them up. We're just kind of taking the rocks that fell off, put them in a corner, and calling it a day and moving on to the next thing. I also know that there are some significant plumbing issues that we run into in all of our facilities. I know, I think at the concert at the Grove, there was some plumbing issues that probably occur on a regular basis at the community center, at the community park, at the library. And so I think those are the types of things that just get repaired in the moment and then moved on to the next thing, as opposed to dealing with the, the true problem and repairing it once and for all. And in, I don't want to necessarily pull Jim up here, but he'd be the one to answer it more specifically than me. But I think those are, just in my experience of observing this over a few months, those are the types of things that we're not, we're not addressing. The, the, the one that drove me crazy was the leaking gutter, walking up the stairs and behind, in the back stairs of City Hall. And, you know, it's a type of thing where, okay, how important is the leaky gutter to all the flooding that's going on? And so it's dripping, it's making a mess, people could slip, it's, it's, you know, it's not good, but it was, it's a reality. It's what we dealt with throughout the winter. So I, I, those may not be very good examples, but those are the types of things I think that are not being addressed on an ongoing basis.
And I think, let's actually ask, since we want detail, I think it'd be good if Mr. Warburton comes up and maybe talk to some of that too.
Well, and also earlier, we talked about systemic, right? This has just been ongoing. Go ahead, Mr. Burnell.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's several things that we don't get to. One of the highest priorities right now, in my opinion, is the creeks. The creeks are loaded with dead wood from all of the, all of the storm damage that we had last year. They desperately need to be cleaned out. There, there's going to be a severe fire hazard if anything happens. That's just one, one item. We don't do street striping unless we absolutely have to. We, we don't do any park maintenance except for the Grove. If you go to Clayton Community Park, that, all the outlying ballfields are severely overgrown because we just can't get to them. There's a, there's a number of things that we aren't doing that we should be doing, and it's just we don't have the manpower to get to it. So, and the list goes on and on. And in my opinion, contracting out the medians and the right-of-ways will allow us to get to some of those things. Like, right now, the library calls us constantly, we have 14 lights out. So I got to send two guys over to the library to, to, you know, replace light bulbs or ballast, or whatever the case may be, which takes away people out of the field. Right now, I have four mainline breaks at Clayton Community Park. I've got one and a half to two guys every week repairing mainlines in the park or out within the city. That takes away, you know, employees that could be doing other things. It's, it's a juggling act, and we're not proactive, we're very reactive. And in my opinion, if we go to contract, we'll be able to turn this around and actually be proactive in some of those instances, like working in the parks and, and making the parks beautiful like they should be. So, thank you.
Can I ask you about mainlines? Because this is the one, this is one of the areas that, ever since I got on, has always, it's, it's been a perpetual issue, right? And I, is there something that, because it sounds like that, that alone, mainline breaks at Community Park or any other area, is, you know, creates a, it, it takes a lot of time to fix. So what can we do? Is there something that we can do to prevent that from continually happening, rather than just repair them as they occur? Like, does it take digging of all the lines and putting them in like steel pipe? I don't know, I don't actually, this is not my area, so I don't know. But it just seems like we've, I've heard about mainline breaks in every weekly report for the past five years. And it doesn't seem like our approach will do anything to prevent it in the future. It will just keep happening? So you tell me if I'm wrong on that.
No, you're, you're correct. With the infrastructure in the park, with the soil movement, the aging PVC pipe, you know, it's, it's going to be a continuing, continuous process.
And this is where, sorry to interrupt you, Jim, this is where Larry would come in with the CIP to essentially have an assessment done of specific areas throughout the city to see if we do need to overhaul that infrastructure. Now, I will tell you, if we think $400,000 is too much for certain things, that will dwarf that reality for us. And so that's another reason why kind of attacking the trimming, as Jim mentioned, and moving the team is inside, is if we do not have the funds yet to deal with a larger holistic approach, at least these Band-Aids could be done in a way that's a little more streamlined and clear. We'll have staff to attack them that may make them happen, but then can be scheduled out to take care of instead of, I think, the urgent reactin- scheduled out to take care of instead of, I think, the urgent react and that has to happen on a, on an almost daily basis at this point to address them.
Yeah, and I guess I'm, it just feels, I'm less inclined to spend 400 on what you call a Band-Aid. I'd rather spend 2 million to do it right as we're supposed to do it. Like that to me is a, is a more strategic, I mean, that's not for you, but I, it just feels like a more strategic approach when we assess the whole thing and say this is what is actually needed, not this is a Band-Aid so that we can get to the next Band-Aid.
So if we look at the entire, we'll call it irrigation system and the issues we have citywide with mainline breaks, I don't think 2 million dollars even comes close in my experience. I mean, we're talking about a number that probably requires bonding or federal, some kind of aid for something out there that probably doesn't exist for us to do it. And that's where, I want to be realistic again, in expectation setting, it may be great to holistically say we want to redo everything in five years or seven years, but the economics of Clayton don't pan out to that. It doesn't work. And so I think regardless of even the mainline breaks, we still, I think, have issues where we don't have enough staffing to deal with, you know, facility needs, right of ways, creeks, everything, trails, we have not mentioned that we don't address really either, you know, dog park. I mean, there are so many things, the list here, and I think I, I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, the deficit is there, it's not going away, it's cumulative, as Mr. Burnell mentioned, and we don't have the funding or even vision to get to the funding frankly, to deal with what would be large, massive infrastructure redos of the city below ground areas, I'll say.
Yeah, I do think that the below-ground work is quite extensive. I mean, I think if you isolate, the community park seems to be the area where the breaks occur most frequently, though I think that they occur in other parts of the city as well. Is that fair?
You're correct. With the Climat Tech project, the new irrigation controllers, the flow sensors and master valves, I also want to add a pressure reducing bell at the top and the bottom sections, which will reduce the amount of pressure that goes through the lines. I think what happens is when the irrigation system comes on, you get water slam and it goes in, it, you know, the water pumps through real fast and breaks the line. Okay, so if we reduce the pressure, hopefully that will alleviate some of the, you know, water slam and cut down on the breaks. Also with the flow sensor, it'll shut the controller off, it'll shut, it'll shut the...
Doesn't fix the pipe.
It doesn't fix the pipe, but it'll save an astronomical amount of money on water, okay? Because we're spending way too much money on water every time the line breaks. And then it's hours before someone sees it and then one of us goes out and shuts it off. So you've got thousands of gallons of water, you know, every time there's a break going down the drain. So I think with the Climat Tech project, adding the pressure reducing bell, the flow sensor and the master valve, that's going to greatly reduce the amount of water that we're wasting and save a lot of money.
Okay, no, that's great. No, and I appreciate that. I think the Climat Tech work will be beneficial on a number of levels and that's, that's one of them. Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, for the mainline stuff, it's still, like when we fix them, do we just fix them with the same material that was there?
We've started using, we were using the Schedule 40 Ts and 90s. We've started using Schedule 80, which is twice as thick. And that seems to be reducing some of the, some of the reoccurring breaks, but there's all the breaks we fixed in the past years that were Schedule 40, so we're, you know, we're refixing breaks that we fixed two or three times. So now we're, now we're going to a different approach and hopefully that's going to help us, you know, cut them down.
Like steel?
Yeah.
I mean, Schedule 80 is still plastic, right?
It's still plastic, but it's twice as thick.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I hope that, that helps.
We're doing everything we can.
Is, do you, so is new equipment going to help in this work at all?
I'll tell you what, the...
Because I know that you had some trouble sourcing the equipment that we, that we talked about earlier.
I was able to, to get rid of the ditch which idea and go to a Vermeer.
I don't know what that is.
Okay, it's, it's still a vacuum trailer. It's just a different brand.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I saved, I think about $6,000 and bought a, just as good a piece of equipment if not better. And we've been using it regularly.
Excellent. Has it made a difference?
Yes, it has. It's, it's made quite a difference. I mean, the guys are clearing out the mainlines way quicker because they're not having to do a ton of digging. It has a, it has a pressure washer on it, so you pressure wash the dirt, turn it into mud and then suck it out with the vacuum. So then we're backfilling with sand. So that, the sand is probably going to be a reoccurring cost, but when you consider the amount of labor that you're spending on each break, I think it's going to, it's, we're still going to save money that way.
That's great. No, I'm glad to hear it. Thank you. I'll, I'll take a break. I think I have other questions, but I'll turn it over to anyone else if you guys have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't come back, please.
I just have one for you and I might have more, but what's the, should you be able to have more, I'm going to call it free time, like you're just twiddling your thumbs out there, but when you have more time, what are you looking forward to doing first? What's something that, that's been on the backlog that you have not been able to do that you're looking forward to actually tackling?
That's a good question. To me, my heart sinks when I think about how Clayton Community Park looks, okay? And you've got significant brown spots from, from wires that are broken, ground squirrels or gophers eating the wires, that kind of thing. You've got, like I mentioned before, you've got all the backs of all the ball fields that are just totally overgrown. Personally, I would like to, I would like to spend some time in Clayton Community Park and spruce it up, redo the turf areas and make the ball fields an excellent place for kids to play instead of, oh, we got nowhere else to go kind of thing. So I mean, putting some time and effort into Clayton Community Park, which is, really should be a showplace other than the Grove. It should be someplace that myself and my crew can be proud of. And at this point, it's not. So that is one of the things that I would like to do. I would also like to enhance the trails, clean up the sides of the trails, trim the trees that are hanging down low. There's asphalt patching that needs to be done, crack ceiling that needs to be done, those types of things. I mean, those trails, I know some of you walk the trails, but I, I visit the trails on a weekly basis and there's hundreds of people per week that walk those trails. And so I would love to significantly enhance the, you know, the trail system. Those are just a couple of things on, on the back of my mind.
And then, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for Mr. Burnell, but if I'm, as I'm looking at this checklist, there, there are several fields that aren't filled out, am I, filled out, am I to assume that that means that those were areas you couldn't get to? For example, I'm just going to throw one out, red curbs being painted.
And that's, that's like I mentioned before, those are definitely things that we're, we are not doing. We can barely get out and paint the fog lines on Pine Hollow, you know, and Marsh Creek, or not Marsh Creek, but Mitchell Canyon, you know, for the school. You know, because there's a, there's a significant amount of traffic in the, you know, in the elementary school area, as we all know. And so that's one area that we almost have to paint every year, you know, to, to prevent accidents and stuff. But the rest of the city, I haven't painted red curbs in three years. You know, and I was told, well, just don't do it. Well, you know, you got to paint fire hydrants and you have to, you know, you have to paint red areas. I mean, drive through the library parking lot and look at the red paint there. You know, we haven't done that in three years. So it's, it's things like that that are just not getting done and we just keep pushing them off, pushing them off because we don't have the time. You know, and I know you guys probably know that, that the Grove, the women's restroom, restroom just blew up this weekend, you know, and it was horrific. I've never seen anything that bad. And I'm out there at nine o'clock at night trying to clean it up. And it's just, I mean, that's just, you know, it doesn't seem fair.
Well, thank you. Don't go, I was going to ask you one more question. Other than the Clayton Community Park and trying to deal with the valves breaking and the water main breaks, what is another big time killer for you and your staff? Because I know that you guys have been reactive when calls come in, if there's something that's dangerous, you guys obviously have gone to go take care of that. For example, I remember once getting a call that there was a, a large branch that was near Endeavour Hall that needed to be taken down because the kids were swinging from it and, and it was a danger. But aside from getting calls from residents that there, there's something that they deem emergent and water mainlines breaking, is there something else that takes up a lot more of your time that's not, that we're just not seeing here?
Well, you pretty much hit the nail on the head. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, it could be different every day, you know? It's, I always say there's never a dull moment in Clayton, you know? And the things that you mentioned are priority. One of the things that comes to mind is line of sight issues, okay? You say, or we say, we trim twice a year, but there's areas we have to trim four or five times a year because if you pull out far enough, you'll be in traffic before you can see oncoming traffic come, you know, coming down the road. So I get calls all the time.
Same.
What's that?
I think I've made some of those calls.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's El Portal onto Old Marsh Creek Road. There's a shrub on the right-hand side that if we don't trim it four or five times a year, I'll get seven or eight phone calls, you know, in a week. Hey, when are you going to trim that ship? Well, we just trimmed it. I'm threatening cutting it down. I mean, seriously, taking it out because it's, you know, there's two or three shrubs on the right-hand side there that you have to trim because legally you have to have a hundred-foot clearance, you know, and they, they can't be any more than 36 inches high. So anybody in a small, low car, you know, can potentially get in an accident because of it. So line of sight, I would say, is, is one of our biggest issues.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple of things I want to try to understand. What's been identified and presented to us is the total backlog of deferred maintenance. Is that correct?
No, the 5,500 hours is the annual deficit of maintenance that the team essentially can't get to in an amount of hours. The deferred maintenance, there are aspects that then turn into deferred maintenance, but I think to truly look at the deferred maintenance list, that would be kind of its own item to address and something that if it were approved, this approach, then we would have the team be able to identify that internally and then start to check off the things that aren't getting taken care of from a deferred maintenance standpoint.
Okay, okay, whatever bundle of information we have to analyze what needs to get done going forward. The only two options that are being presented are the reclassification and the $400,000 proposed RFP.
So staff's recommendation to council is that you reclassify the maintenance supervisor position and do an RFP that we think will cost 400 grand, we'll know when they come in, but do an RFP to essentially change the way we operate, to have trimming of medians landscape throughout the right of ways of the city and irrigation from the valve forward to be done by a contractor to allow the staff to move to deal with these other issues under the current staffing levels. The other alternative that I guess is unspoken, but I've spoken to you this evening, is we, instead of doing that, we can look to reduce service delivery. To me, those are the two paths. Adding the four staff members is more expensive, at least on the surface, that I'm recommending today with the contract approach and maybe difficult to frankly even higher. And there, there are a variety of alternatives, I guess, in the middle, but I think again, as I said earlier, I would not want to bring this council seven or eight kind of micro decisions where staff really feels like we need to move to a contract approach for this large subset of the work, or we need to in essence talk about a different service delivery model that can allow the current staff to essentially make up the 5,500 hour gap by doing less things, which will have unintended consequences that are going to be hard to quantify from a dollar and cents perspective because it means more deferred maintenance, it means more growth, it means more potential issues that require urgent addressing, but that's what's in front of you today. Yes, council member?
Okay, so the estimate of this $400,000 is your best estimate on what it's going to take to get us back to where we should be at this point in our existence.
The $400,000, yeah, it's the estimate, to be clear, on what we think a contractor will...
Right.
...to take over the trimming of the medians landscape and the irrigation work from the valve forward. I think what we're hoping is that staff through our normal budgets can then address the deferred maintenance because they're not attacking those other things. So those staff hours can be used to address the deferred maintenance throughout the city, as Jim mentioned, in the variety of areas from creeks to parks to line of sight issues and other, other things in the facilities that we basically don't touch right now.
So wait, for that, for that to be true, then the 400,000 would need to cover more than 5,500 hours?
So the, I don't understand your question, I guess.
Well, the 5,500 is the deficit.
Yes.
And we, we want to supplement our maintenance spend to cover the deficit, but I think Vice Mayor Diaz is asking, well then, what takes care of the deferred and the deferred maintenance, right? And what you're, what you just mentioned is that if we do this, then that allows staff to plan and do work on those things that are deferred. But that necessarily means then that the work that we're going to contract out would exceed the 5,500 hour deficit. Is that a reasonable conclusion?
I think that's probably a reasonable conclusion because trimming takes up a significant amount of their work. I think it's near 9,000 total hours.
It's like close to 10?
Yeah, and so I think we'd be able to identify what's not happening ongoing, as Mr. Burnell put in his report, and then really start to tackle what is deferred maintenance throughout all the aspects of the city and develop proactive schedules, as Jim mentioned, to striping and street lamp review and this and that and the other. I mean, it would allow us to take things that aren't even on this list because we don't even do them and, and we don't have a process to develop them, to then really create a game plan around that. I mean, that is the hope, right? The hope isn't that we contract out and then add four more staff. The hope is that we contract out, we bring our staff in, we see what that does in the year, as I mentioned earlier, and then assess, is there any other needs to deal with deferred maintenance or do, can this plan work moving forward? You know, I think having that year to evaluate is important because we'll really see where are the other gaps then. And then question at that point, is there a way to mitigate them or are the remaining gaps so small that we don't need to address them? I think it becomes less of a theoretical exercise and more of an actual exercise, having that year to evaluate this, this approach.
How does Warner Brothers Tree Service play into all this?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Warburton talk about that, but a summary version is they deal specifically with the trees. I think a little bit of fire break work, but don't quote me on that. If you want to speak to it a little bit, Jim?
I mean, because what I'm looking at or asked getting to is could their current agreement that we have somehow be expanded to shore up some of this other work that needs to get done?
It's a good question. I think this work is way too expansive from a governmental bidding perspective to do something like that.
In the past, I've used Warner Brothers to, to do some of the creek work and they do a fine job at that, but I had to use some of the contract seasonal labor money to do that. Now the budget has been reduced, so that, that will not happen this year. So I'm going to have to have our crews go in and take, take care of that work. We have until October 15th to, to clean out the creeks before fishing games, as you can't be in them anymore. So Warner Brothers has been used in the past, so it is possible to answer your question.
Thank you.
I want to compliment Mr. Burnell on the work that he put together on this, and I do have sort of a question. When you're talking about the salary range for this reclassification, in general, maybe can you address, the cities that you listed on here, what's the span of control of those public works managers or those public safety, public service people? What's the span of control? Because we have, what, five or six people? What in general do they have?
So I don't, I don't know specifically what each of those cities has. When the organizational assessment was done, they chose cities that were comparable to Clayton and so therefore you end up with the Pinole and the Danville and the Arinda, which are about the same size and have the same types of needs as Clayton does. size and have the same types of needs as Clayton does. And so I don't know what numbers specifically.
Just one other thing. So I'm just trying to think about the figures here. So if we're talking 400,000 and it's going to supplant the 90, it's about just shy of 9,800 hours?
I would say, take the number out of it.
Okay.
Because we really don't know what
We're going to take a contract amount.
Yes.
And supplant 9,800 hours of trimming work that's listed?
I think not all because line of sight and things, as Jim mentioned, they'll be doing phases throughout the city, but as, we'll call them hot button issues arise, whether it's line of sight or some other areas that need to happen. The team is still going to have to do some of that. You know, we probably think it's in the order of magnitude of 6,000 to 7,000 is really probably truly what they're supplanting, and the team still has a little bit of work they have to do throughout the city. Because trimming also happens in parks and stuff wrapped in that number, and so it's not, it's not the full number. So I would say you're probably looking more towards, you know, 6,000 to 7,000 is what they're supplanting, and that leaves 2-ish and some change for the team to still address.
Okay.
That's how I'd look at it.
So that is about four to four and a half FTEs worth of time, according to how we're doing the math here?
That would be correct, give or take, yeah.
Right. So we're going to free up full-time people, at least four people as a result of doing this? Is that how we're thinking about it?
That's what's making up, in essence, the 5,500 hours, correct. We're doing that to pull them into the other stuff.
But it's not 5,500 hours, right? Because it's 55 plus the six. It's actually the, 5,500 is the deficit, but
Yes.
what we just talked about was that it's 6,000 to 7,000 hours.
Within that 18,500 number.
Yeah.
Right. So if 6,000 hours is contracted for trimming, and they're not doing that anymore, that team has 6,000 hours, about the deficit, to go back and deal with all of these other issues, along with then identifying deferred maintenance issues that we don't even address, and then trying to put a game plan together and try to work it within the current staffing model as best we can to start to pick off some of these deferred maintenance areas, too.
I have to think about that for a second. I think, I feel like that's double counting, but I gotta.
So the 18,500 number includes the entire trimming number of 9,000 something. If 6,000 of that, forsake a conversation, is contracted out, staff has 6,000 hours of non-trimming time that we're saying can go be addressed in other areas to help mitigate the 5,500-hour gap.
Yes. In theory, the trimming is already occurring, or it's not?
No, the trimming's occurring in lieu of doing all these other things. I mean, that's the focus that they have to go on in the trice time of the year, is trimming. I mean, it took them, Jim, remind me here, seven months to catch up to the last winter? I mean, so it is an exhaustive amount of staff and workers.com time to get there. If a contractor's doing it, thus the reason for our test period here, it allows staff a similar amount of time that we're in deficit to deal with the annual work, to move inward to focus on that, and then allows them and Jim the time to say, okay, what other deferred maintenance areas do we need to start to plan out, as Jim said, to be proactive and not reactive? Thus the reason why we are trying to, in essence, to the least amount as possible, although I know it's more money, try to facilitate the current service demand lead in a way that is at least limiting the increase over time that we would have to address if we maintain the service level in the future.
Okay. I think we lost Councilmember Chupi on for a moment. We could do a recess if you need to. Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. I want to see if I wrote some notes. I want to make sure I didn't miss any questions, but is there any other questions from council at this time? Okay, I'd open up the item for public comment. If there's public comment on this from the audience now is the time. Mr. Hayden?
We have cards over here.
They do have cards, yes. So, Mr. Hayden, feel free.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, I'm very glad you're doing this analysis because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding throughout the town when they see the condition of the maintenance on the landscaping. And what they're seeing is the cumulative effect of what has happened in Clayton as we've grown and expanded and added more facilities for our community, like Clayton Community Park, like the Grove Park, like the Trails. And we were a little more flush at the time with the new development that was occurring. So we did a lot of that nice enhancements for Clayton, and now it's coming time to pay the bill. We're seeing that a lot of these have had their maintenance deferred. The irrigation systems are becoming aged, and with the movement of not only the pipes themselves, but the land around them, just as many of us experience at home, we're seeing leakage. And as you pointed out, in some cases, I mean, in a perfect world, the best solution is to replace the irrigation lines, but that's a very expensive proposition. So what it seems like you're dealing with now is what's the best solution with the current budgetary constraints? So you're looking at, is there a better way we can manage our workforce? And I'm glad to see the acknowledgement that Jim Warburton has been dealing with a tremendous challenge in trying to put out all the fires, the demands of the city because they're seeing the visual impacts of this deferred maintenance, and they want it all fixed immediately. And to send out his people to do that pulls them out of other jobs to do, and you see that deferred maintenance, you see that over 5,000 hours is being deferred because of the lack of sufficient staff to do everything that they used to be able to accomplish. But the needs are growing, the revenue and the budget has not grown to compensate by buying, excuse me, hiring more of a resource to take care of those. So that's where you're finding yourself now, and what's the best way to deal with it is certainly to give your supervisor, who has basically replaced two positions previously. There used to be two managers that co-managed the maintenance department. One did pretty much the field work, the other did the admin work. Jim's doing it all and on-call for emergency services, doing a lot of work in the field. So I certainly want to reinforce the recommendation that his position be expanded and rewarded because he's been a tremendous asset to Clayton, and there'd be a big loss without him and his dedication to that function. So we're also seeing this reserve account capability of coming to the rescue at least short-term for 400,000, where that does look like a short-term solution, but again, it's just a Band-Aid to a much larger, long-term need of the city. And it's just going to get us back to where we're going to hold our own, maybe, after the 400 is spent and they've allowed us to capture up, but we're going to immediately begin to fall into a deficit unless additional budgetary needs are being met. So that's the balance there that has to be created. So I want you to try to balance all that, but also reward what's being done already. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers, I think.
I just had a question, actually, to you, and that is, when you've talked about the 5,500 hours, you've always said trimming, and yet one time you said trimming and irrigation. So is that a short, are you talking about 5,500 hours or the $400,000 quote contract that is just trimming, or does that include the irrigation?
So Mr. Brunel's report identified that 5,500 total staff hours related to all the functions is the deficit. What I speak of what we're trying to do related to the contract we're proposing to do, that's median work, trimming, right-away trimming, landscape trimming throughout all the arterials throughout the city, and then irrigation work with that same firm from the valve up. So it doesn't deal with all these mainline breaks, it deals with all of the standard irrigation work that you would see in most people happen at your home, obviously in a more commercial setting, but similar concept is what the focus of the contract work would be. We estimate that that is anywhere between 6,000 to 7,000 hours that that contractor would take and absorb, thus allowing that time for staff to then move internally, essentially taking care of the current annual service gap and then being able to identify deferred maintenance issues on top of that that we can start planning to slowly address as well moving forward.
Okay.
Did I answer your question? Okay, great.
Yes.
I think to elaborate, just to specifically address, speaking of irrigation, within the report, we identify approximately 1,000 hours annually spent on just irrigation-related fixes. So that's the component of the 18,5-ish.
Thank you.
Were there other cards?
Yes, I had two speaker cards. One was from Mr. Hayden, the other's from Mr. Miller.
Thank you very much. Ed Miller, 590 Mount Dell Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to address you, members of the council, listening this evening. You guys make a terrible podcast, by the way. You really need to work on your timing, make it more interesting. Just kidding. But my comments will be brief, but they're intended to convey ideas that could possibly work in dovetail with what you're talking about, but also sort of like allow you to dial the amount of money or effort and print a little bit of money to work on this stuff. So I live in Dana Ridge, which is an area that was developed during the 1970s, and we're facing the same problems that everybody else is, you know, aging infrastructure. We have massive leaks, you know, in our irrigation. We had pig damage a couple of years ago, which we haven't fully restored yet. Anyway, my point is that, of course, they're also cost-sensitive. HOAs don't like to raise dues unless they have to. And one of the ideas that I intend to bring forward to them is that there are certain areas that are, we've already lost the war. There's a lot of pig damage or, you know, irrigation has been leaky in that area. There's a lot of brown spots. The turf is not what it was. And so what I would encourage you to think about is the possibility of, if there are already some areas of the Clayton community, they're like browned out and leaky, or other areas throughout the city, that we've sort of already lost the war, if we could shut off, if we just basically resign there, fly the white flag for right now, and say we're going to focus on fixing things in other areas and get them up to speed, we can turn off the water to those areas. And water's like gold around here. I mean, tens of thousands of dollars go to that water bill. It would not be a surprise to me if just shutting down a portion of Clayton community, for example, might add $100,000 to your budget. So I'm just saying, maybe you don't even go for the whole 400,000, but you target like, okay, we've lost the war up here or there or somewhere, and you just focus on going ahead and going with contract work, but focusing it in areas and doing the capital kinds of improvements if possible to repair these things that keep sending off alarm bells and possibly installing more smart timers that will not water when it's raining or something, so you get additional water savings going forward, and also remote, you know, stuff where you can turn things on or off with your phone, sprinklers and stuff, or a water main. I'm just saying, there's some ideas. Have fun.
Thank you. Any other hands in the room, or cards, I suppose?
No more speaker cards on this item.
I do not see any hands raised online. So you already spoke, I'm sorry.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Mike Wells, and I guess one of the biggest things I want to point out what I heard for the past one hour here is, this is a people issue. Local government is made of people, not just numbers and bean counters. And your park supervisor, when he talked about he wants to feel proud, his crew about Clayton Community Park, well, that should mean something to all of us. And so I think we've got to look at the bigger picture because from what I'm hearing, we're at the breaking point. So we've got to look at the bigger picture and not just get stuck on these small numbers here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, then, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Any other things that folks would like to add at this time?
Well, I'm just going to put my two cents in here. I am all for the reclassification. I think Jim has done an outstanding job with drinking from a fire hose on a daily basis. And I also would like to really see, whether it's 400,000 or whatever we determine it's going to be tonight, I'd really like to see us do some outsourcing on the landscaping to see what the true capability of our maintenance department can be if they're truly just going to do maintenance. I want to see them have the potential to live up to their ability. And I think that it's a one-year beta test, or whatever we want to call it. And I do think that climate tech will help us all the way around. I know Jim's going to, and Amy are going to be meeting with them weekly. There will be some sensors on irrigation. Again, I am hopeful that also at the end of the year, maybe this landscaping company that has yet to be determined, our city will look outstanding, and maybe it won't be so much of a task in year two or year three or year four. We'll reduce the workers.com money. I just, I see a lot of wins, and so I am all for this. Those are my comments.
Any other comments from council?
We got an email a few months ago asking for people, council members, to have a ride-along with our maintenance supervisor, Mr. Warburton. I was curious how many of my fellow staff had joined him. I know I did. So it looks like our mayor and our vice mayor didn't. Jim, I appreciated your efforts coming out of COVID and knowing the challenges that you had to deal with, not only from a staffing standpoint, but trying to find staff, and all the crap that the citizens were throwing on you for the poor shape of our maintenance district, our medians, our parks, and how little staff you had to actually do it, and how little staff you could find from the subcontracting standpoint. And there were people who ran on the platform with weeds and how poor your job was and calling for your head. And I knew what you were doing, and I appreciated you. But what really made me appreciate you more than ever is that little ride-along I had with you for an hour. We stopped at a irrigation control that had just broken, and you pointed it out, and you pointed the big old hole that had been dug with the new piece of equipment, and you were so proud of it. This is what it looks like, and this is what I'm dealing with all the time. And it just dawned on me. So I asked you, how many of these are there throughout the city of Clayton? And you said hundreds. You just shook your head and said hundreds. I said, are these on a map? Because, well, kind of, sort of, like, most of it's in my head. And then I asked you the question, does anybody else know where this is? Well, not really. The institutional knowledge which you carry in your head on a daily basis, that if we were to lose that, is hundreds of thousands of dollars in contracting to try to replace that. We need to capture that. We need to plot it. You and Larry need to get together and spend several weeks plotting it and putting it into a GIA system. That's where one-time money should be spent, is digitizing our irrigation system, our controllers, and taking that out of your head and put it in place. That's what succession planning is, is finding, is having that available for the next person should you find an awesome employment elsewhere that's going to pay you what you're worth. That's what succession planning is. So I am all in favor of giving you the bump that's being asked for here. It's well, well worth it for what It's well, well worth it for what you have in your head. I have no doubt that you deserve it. I just want to throw that out there.
Any comments?
Go ahead. You can go.
Typically, I wait for you, so if you'd like to add anything.
I would concur with what Councilmember Clovin just said. I shared that with you as well as on my ride-along, and I know from the conversations that we've had over the last three years, that you are very passionate about your work and making sure that we, all of us residents, can enjoy our beautiful city, and there just aren't enough hours in the day to get done with what you have to get done. I remember we talked about the number of, by the time you finish going through one part of the city, and you actually make your loop around with trimming the right-of-ways and medians, it's already overgrowing in the areas you've already hit. So I'm hoping that the contractors can do this a little bit more often, so that we aren't facing those same issues, and that you are free to be able to do the things that need to be done around the city that need to, that have been, I don't want to call it neglected, but you just haven't had time to actually do it. So I definitely feel like you deserve the, this change in your, to an exempt status. But I am slightly concerned for the other piece, and I get all the reasons why we're doing it, but I do have an issue with using the reserves to cover operational expenses, especially when we know they're ongoing, and I know that this was something that several council members have expressed in the past. So after the year, I don't want to have to go backwards. I think, so I'm very, I don't know if people saw me, but I kind of, I was having a moment where I just had, I almost had an instant headache, having this, hearing what I was hearing, because there's no plan. And I think if we had talked about this at a broader level for goal-setting, we could have actually discussed this, because this isn't the first time we're hearing these things are deficient, and we have zero plan. And so after the last council meeting, we talked about, we're not going to do the strategic plan now, that got put off until early 2024, which further puts us behind. And at some point, we're going to have to stop kicking the can down the road, because we've been doing it on a lot of things over the last three years. Waiting until a year from now to figure out how we're going to pay for this is problematic. We already know that the landscape maintenance district is going to sunset in 2027. We have two times to go back before the residents to let them know this. That's in 2024 and 2026. Because we haven't had these conversations in discussing how we're going to be able to apply and pay for everything, because we don't have enough revenues coming in, 2024 is almost looking like it's off the table, which leaves us 2026. We cannot wait until this time next year to discuss or to see how this actually works. It's slightly different than the $36,000 that we wanted to put into the budget to figure out what this new master fee schedule is going to bring in. This is significantly different. So I'm inclined to say yes, do it, because we do need to actually get the work done, and we know that this is going to put us further behind, but I am not comfortable at all using these reserves to pay for one-time expenses and not having a conversation sooner rather than later on how to make this sustainable going forward.
And if I may, council member, to your point, city manager and staff want to have that conversation, thus, I think that goes back to how it's imperative, when I come back with potentially a new proposal from our possible vendor for strategic planning, that we talk about that and try to get some agreement around how we're going to do that, because I do think this is only one issue. I'll be very frank with the council, as you're, I think, all well aware in our conversations. There are a lot of, what I'm going to very much refer to as foundational needs of this city that need to be talked about, identified, and broad costs brought to you to understand the full depth of the order of magnitude, which it, if, you know, if it's 300 to 400 grand with this, then, you know, you can imagine what the number might be with everything together. We can definitely do that at a later date. My concern broadly is, as that timetable gets pushed out further, and it becomes more and more difficult to start to address some of these issues, and I have a team in this very specific example, who I'll be, you know, honest, are working so hard that I think morale and retention are going to be somewhat tough over the long haul of another year, not doing something to try to alleviate it, either through significant service demand reduction, or the approach that's recommended before you today.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And that's, that's my point, is the infrastructure here is broken. I mean, it's so, it's a dinosaur. Things are obsolete, and it's, we've known that. I've only been here three years. I knew it from the day that I got here that this is problematic, and we need to fix it. And it's, we're coming on three years, and it's still not done. So I feel you. I understand, and I'm glad that we're bringing this to light and having this, at least, I don't want to call it piecemeal, but we're bringing them one by one for getting things done, and this is not a way to approach this. We need to have this conversation sooner rather than later. And I know that we've already said we'd do it in early 2024, but to the extent that we can move that up, I think it's imperative that we do.
Well, I think, you know, to that, I would agree with. I think I really, really don't like the piecemeal approach, and I would, I would much rather look at some things in totality, so that we have a good sense of what we're looking at to get our arms around it. Like I said earlier, I'm much more inclined to do a lot rather, at one time, even though it needs to go in over many, you know, a longer period of time, rather than a phased, how about this, yes, no, how about this, yes, no, how about this, yes, no. That approach, to me, is, I'm not a fan, and I would be disappointed if that's the way that this continues. So, I mean, regarding these two actions, I, first, I want to say, I do recognize the work that Mr. Warburton, that you've done over your many years, and it doesn't go unappreciated. I think it's been, you know, somewhat of a Sisyphean task that you've been given. So that, that needs to be recognized. I will say, though, that assessing the performance, which we're not necessarily doing, but I do want to give you a compliment on that, assessing the performance of an individual is independent of whether or not we think a position should be classified a certain way. I think, you know, the appropriate HR way to handle this is first assess the position, and then assess the correct individual for the position. Now, we can do that simultaneously, but I want to make sure that when we do that, we're not saying, you've done it, therefore, this position should change. The position should change regardless, because I think that's what it calls for, and that's what I believe that you were saying. The work that we are, that we are requiring essentially calls for the position change, independent of the individual that holds the position, and I think that is the appropriate way to consider it. And then, once we make the decision to reclassify the position, then you evaluate who the best individual for that role is, and I think that is what you would do. And so that, I just want to make sure that that is a two, that should be a two-step process.
And I think, you know, that is within my purview as a city manager, and I can tell you that that, all of those things have been met.
Yeah, so I leave that to you, but I just want to, as our commentary reflects, I want to make sure our commentary reflects that process, because I think that is a more appropriate process than, than the alternative. As to the, in the agenda item, what it does recommend is increasing the appropriation by 400,000, and I think what you said earlier is, is more palatable, because I think that we can go out to market and examine what it would take. 400 is a placeholder, I understand. It's not a number that we should be wedded to. It could be, well, it's unlikely to be significantly lower, but it could be significantly higher. And so I'm not, I would not be comfortable appropriating the funding, but I would say it would be, it would behoove us to assess what it would take for this, so that at least it gives us one data point in the presentation, what I would expect to come forward in the next, whenever it is ready, that, among other data points, so that we can have a better, more holistic discussion about what this actually represents.
So am I hearing correctly that the council is desiring?
Well, that's just me.
Well, I'm repeating back what I'm hearing from you to get direction potentially, is we want to have a holistic discussion about all the foundational needs of the city broadly at one time, which, again, I think it's important to mention, that was my goal with strategic planning, is that. And so what I, what I will try to do is, is bring back, and get Trepepi Smith to give me that revised approach sooner than later, although they already know about it and are trying to work through it. But I will tell you, the complexity of what we're talking about, again, is not cheap to do from good consultants for the work. And I don't want to stray too much from this agenda item, but to look for holistic review and not doing this work in this way, and as you classified it all, I don't agree, is piecemeal, Mayor. I want to have that conversation. I think we should have that conversation. I can separate the two by a five-year forecast that I could bring in late November, which is kind of slated, and talk about it there, separate and distinct from strategic planning. Now, what you don't get is the input from the community and all the other things we've talked about, but you will see holistically the delta that I believe you're talking about when we add in these foundational needs. I think that is slated for the 21st of November, and I'm happy to bring that back on that continued timeline, if that achieves the objective of this council to see everything on the paper at once, and what that delta is. And in the meantime, we'll be working through an RFP process, separate and distinct from that, to get a sense of what this actual number is, although we'll throw in the current placeholder for sake of that analysis. Is that what I'm hearing, is the broader desire of this council?
Yeah, I mean, to clarify, this work that Mr. Bernal did, I think, is great, and it gives a much better picture of what the needs are. I would like to see that more broadly. What is the need, because you've alluded to it in many occasions, hey, we have these needs, but I think we need to understand that, because to say that, well, we should spend 100,000 here, 100,000 there, pretty soon, you know, you're talking about real dollars. That's from a movie. It's going, it adds up very quickly, and making decisions at that level, I think, obfuscates the bigger picture, and I think that is not a good way to do decision-making. Like, here, we say it's 18.5 hours, but we don't talk about another FTE. We mention it, but we don't, it's not quantified, right? We talk about the standby time, like, these are real things, and they add up. And I think, looking at it holistically, maybe there's ways that you could chunk it, like, this is the maintenance picture. This is the whatever, you know, that type of thing may make sense. I leave it to you to kind of figure out a good way to, to think about it, but piecemeal decision-making leads to bad decision-making.
Yeah, and again, I won't characterize it as piecemeal, because I think there are significant issues that need to be addressed more timely than others, and that's how we have been bringing them forward, with lack of a strategic direction from the council, which is what we really need to holistically address, what you're referring to, Mayor. I think, I think bringing them back, division by division, is the similar issue that you have, which is that you're still, the amount of dollars in each area may vary, but, but I think we have to bring them all together to you, to show you that delta.
And that's fine, because like, if you come, like, if this comes back, and we say, hey, to get maintenance where it really needs to be, it's, you know, an extra $800,000 a year, give or take, right? Pretend for a moment. And we come back and say, engineering is a million, and like, police is 5 million. I mean, you're going, like, there are things that are, that could be achievable, and then there are things that are just not. And so, like, to really, and I think you mentioned earlier about the challenge of prioritizing, but it really is a prioritization exercise. That is, that has to be part of it. There's always a element of prioritization, and things that are must-haves, like safety issues, we must do, and other things that we have clearly, we already have done prioritization, because, as you mentioned, you know, we have deferred things that we could, we could defer because we had no choice. And so there, there's always an element of prioritization, and whether or not we say it is or not, we're going to be doing it. I mean, our staff is doing it. So let's talk about it, figure out what that actually is, and then we can actually, we can have a real plan on how to address it. Because I don't think, if the piecemeal phrase is not palatable, then looking at it in parts is not a good strategic way to approach.
And again, I'm, I'm all for it and a desire to do it all at once, so I'm happy to come back with the goal of November 21st, with a five-year forecast that does exactly that. It quantifies and articulates the needs in each area, why they're important, foundational data, when appropriate and if appropriate for certain areas. But a lot of this is very foundational, like a vehicle replacement fund, which, you know, is like...
And it doesn't need to be the level specificity that...
Yeah, nor could it be, frankly, with the timing that we have.
We look at here.
Yeah.
And I will say, just as a point of clarification, November 21st is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and I will not be here.
Then we can move that to, you know, first meeting in January or some, I don't think we do much on December 5th, when we switch everything, so I don't want to, you know, and then the 19th, I think, is, everybody's gone anyways, probably in December. So if we want to stay the first meeting in December, or December, January is a placeholder, so we can...
So let's talk through scheduling offline.
That's fine.
But I do think it's important to do that. So what I would recommend here is, do what you need to do to seek information. You can do an RFI or RFP, that's fine, like, it doesn't obligate us in any way. Find out what it actually is, and then let's, let's talk with better information.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
That doesn't slow you down any, but I don't, I would not feel comfortable appropriating the money at this time.
Yeah, I'm with, and as I said earlier, no heartburn from staff on that approach at all.
And then, I, I mean, it would be my, my opinion to move forward with the reclassification, as Ms. Walker described. And so that's the first part of what was recommended. Go ahead.
The only thing I would add regarding the reclassification, whoever the incumbent is, I think we, we ought to provide our community with a frequent update on progress to getting rid of that deferred maintenance and bringing things back to normal. I don't know if it ought to be quarterly, six months, but some sort of a update brought back to the city council and to the community, because it is a top, you know, propriety.
One thing about that, which I concur with, is that we talk about deferred maintenance, and we've talked about specific examples of it, and I, I know that those are just one of, a plethora of examples. I think it's important to surface those. Like, rather than say, there's a lot, I know that there's probably lists upon lists of various, in various form, but that needs to be formalized as well, so that we can be very clear on what we're talking about, so that it isn't some boogeyman that's hanging out there. I mean, it will look like a boogeyman when we're done, but it really does need to be very clear, these are the things we're not doing. This is what, this is what the cost is of not doing anything. And that's why I talked earlier about, like, what's the alternative? Because I, you know, we can tell people, we're missing all this stuff, but a lot of the issues that we're talking about are not highly visible. And so it's, it's not as compelling of a fact pattern without saying the alternative. And you always need an alternative, or else it's, it's in the ether.
Yeah, no, I hear you, Mayor. I think here's the trouble that you may, all may have with the next answer I give. That is truly a facility conditions assessment, which I have been a part of throughout my career.
Well, you've given it a fancy name now.
Well, no, but that's what it is. It's not, you know, I don't have staff, I don't have time for staff to even take a breath, let alone do that, nor do they have the expertise to go ballot-to-ballot. I mean, this is what we're talking about.
And that's true. You're right, and that's why we have Ron doing this.
Right.
That is an appropriate use of dollars to actually take stock of where we're at. That, to me, is like something that's valuable, to say, this is where we're at.
Totally, yeah.
And unless you do the whole thing, you are making decisions piecemeal.
So I will tell you my experience with larger agencies, so I'll just surmise and move backwards on the size of this agency, is that that type of work is probably going to cost you 150,000 to 250,000 to assess. And so I just want to create...
Get a bid.
No, that, that's what I'm, I want to create expectation setting, as we talk about those types of ways of getting information, that, much like strategic planning, for 20 grand, these things are going to dwarf it, frankly, in reality.
Yeah, I think it's worth getting a bid, because then it is, again, an additional data point. data point that then we can assess. Right now, we have a lot of, you know, for lack of a better term, discussion without those data points, and it's hard, I would struggle to say go forward unless you have those data points and you look at them together.
Yeah, I hear you. The short version, though, to just not to bury the lead, is we are significantly within probably a seven-figure number operationally ineffective, citywide.
Sure. Get the bids, and then we will look at it.
But I also, I don't want to spend, the other struggle I have is paralysis analysis, right? And so, we know the number is significant to the level of a million. I can't cut anything to get there, so what, I mean, the strategy conversation or policy direction from you all is pretty clear, do you want to get revenue or not? And if the answer is no, then I can bring back alternatives, but I'm a little leery about wasting a ton of staff time and hundreds of thousands of dollars, frankly, to come back with you with the same back-of-the-napkin answer I can give you today, which is from a policy perspective, the decision on go or no-go with revenue is the same. Your answer to that question as a board essentially dictates then an operational decision that I can put forward, whether that's going forward to get it or looking at a different way of having less service and what that means to all of you.
I'm going to just jump in, because I think we're going, yeah, we're getting beyond the topic.
So, we can discuss how to approach strategically offline, but there does need to be more, and we can work through what that more means.
I know, but I think, I think I'd rather, we can talk, but I think that's a full council discussion. I don't think it's, I mean, this is a broad policy area.
Sure.
So, that would just be agendized at a future meeting, but I think we could adopt the resolution that is in the packet and presented for you, given what I'm hearing.
I think we are all in alignment on number one of the recommendation, and I think for, I would not proceed with number two.
With direction of the staff for number two, I haven't spoken on that item. I would like to see, I appreciate all the work that Ron has done. Thank you very much. It's awesome to really get a number behind it. You threw out 5,500 hours and 3.7 FTEs, which is more than the MRG report of two FTEs for our maintenance department. So, it's kind of interesting in the perspective you put it there. We're still not even addressing the one FTE which the planning department needs as assistance, because she's burnt out as heck and she needs some assistance. But that's beside the point. Let's get back to the $400,000. I like the idea, but I'm not willing to spend that just now until we have a greater, larger conversation about revenue versus expenses. This is a lot of money relative to what our reserves are, especially our upper reserves, a significant chunk of that. We need to get the number from the RFP. So, I, for number two, would be in favor of giving you direction to go out and get the numbers, so we can have a larger conversation. But I don't want to approve that money until we have a conversation about the larger view, which really should be part of the strategic plan we talked about last week, which includes public participation on what's most important. Is it safety? Is it landscape and maintenance? Is it in other things? So, we need to have that larger discussion and then figure out where to put those monies accordingly. So, my direction, suggestion is to give you authorization to go ahead and get the bids so we can have the conversation. And so, I would say yes on one, and modify number two for please submit the, get the RFPs, but not approve the appropriation.
And I just want to go back to something, Councilmember Cloven, that you said earlier, and I'm sure you were referencing me about something that I ran on, but one of the things that I did ran on, and I just want to clarify, was supporting this department more, giving this maintenance and facilities department the resources and encouragement and the people and the things that they need. And I feel like we finally saw that with our interim city manager for the first time, and now our current city manager. So, bravo. I hope we're turning a corner here.
I need a motion.
If there's no other comment from council, then I would entertain a motion. I think we actually only need a motion for number one.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution adjusting the salary schedule for the reclassified position of maintenance superintendent effective October 7, 2023, and reclassifying the maintenance supervisor, et cetera. Is that good enough?
And then, we're taking no action on number two, just to be explicit, and with the guidance that you've received.
I second that motion.
Okay. I will call, that's a motion and a second. I will call the roll. Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Trupiano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
And I, vote aye as well. All right. With that, that concludes item 3A, not 3A, sorry, 7A, 8A, sorry. It's like a teleprompter, you just read what's in front of you. Okay. Next is council items. This is limited to council requests for future meetings. Does anyone have any requests for future meetings?
I have one. It's just a reiteration of what I've already asked for several times already, with a slight modification. So, I've asked, I don't know how many times now, maybe two or three, to do like a 360 review of the staff on the council, because my concern is, as I mentioned several times, is that council might be overstepping their bounds, and given what I've been seeing in the last couple of months, and especially in the last month or so, I do think that I would like us to have a conversation about the city attorney coming back and actually doing an investigation to find out if council is actually overstepping their bounds and creating a toxic or hostile work environment. So, I would like that to come back for us to discuss. Oh, and the additional part is to, if there are findings of that, and we can discuss this too during our next, when it comes back to us, sooner rather than later, hopefully, that we can also talk about having a censure policy, since I don't think that we have one yet. That's something I also want to talk about.
Any other items? Okay. Then, next is council reports. Councilmember Cloven, did you want to kick us off today?
It's been busy, to say the least, with my fellow council members, Trupiano, Diaz, and Tillman. We attended three days in Sacramento, Cal Cities. This is the second one I've attended, and I know that it was Kim's first, and there's so much to be learned from working with and talking to council members from other cities who face similar issues that we face, whether it be budgetary issues, whether it be hate speech and dealing with social media. I mean, there's all the stuff that we deal with on a regular basis, other cities are dealing with it too. And just to have those conversations, to have a cocktail and say, oh, my gosh, let me one-up you with this. It's kind of nice to know that you're part of a larger fraternity of other people who are dealing with the same issues with their own town, and I really appreciated that. Been involved with the Clayton Pride and getting prepared for next year, what that looks like, and obviously, Oktoberfest this past weekend was just amazing. Friday night is what Clayton is. I mean, bringing my little, my kids as little girls on Friday night to the carnival, which is just for Claytonians. I mean, because it's not advertised out there, the Friday is open, so the public comes on Saturday and Sunday, but Claytonians know that Friday night's for them, and there's no alcohol sold. So, it's just kids getting goldfish and riding rides, and parents just enjoying being parents, and it's like Norman Rockwell, all wrapped into one. I love our town, and I love what CBAC does for that, and then to throw two days of incredible just joy. Who would know that, you know, people as hopped up on beer as they are can be so happy and without any strife? It's kind of fun. I just, CBC does a wonderful job, and I just really appreciate that. But one of the things I do want to say, I've had dozens, and this is not, this is not singular, dozens of conversations with residents who are very, very concerned about the tone and tenor of our council, and specifically, the change in tone on social media towards our staff, and specifically, our city manager, and have asked me if, as a council, we're going, we're trying to make changes that we shouldn't. I just want to acknowledge that personally, I have heard many positive things about how you are being transparent in the community and how much it's appreciated, and I'm grateful for our staff and how hard you work, and Jim, I'm grateful for you and every one of you, because I know you're way understaffed but overworked, and I appreciate all you do. That's the end of my report.
Councilmember Tillman?
I will echo the Cal Cities comment that Councilmember Cloven just made. I, too, attended several other sessions, and I actually was a panelist, as I mentioned, at prior meetings at Cal Cities, that was discussing the hate crimes and hate speech, and how we as elected leaders, what our responsibilities are. It was a great panel that was with Kevin Wilk from Walnut Creek. He was talking about antisemitism and the rise in the calls that they've been getting. They were actually going to be going to, removing Zoom, because they've tried to control it different ways, by having hybrid, and now they're going, if they're going to spew hate, they want them to come into chambers and do it in person. So, they are removing Zoom as of the October 17th. Concord removed it as of tonight, so people are being preemptive, even though they have not been attacked, given that other cities locally and nearby in our region have been, Brentwood was just last week. So, the call to action that we had during that panel was whether or not it's specific to something that's in your city. We, as elected leaders, do have a responsibility to let our residents know that we stand by them, and so, everybody reacts in different ways. Some people will actually want to be vocal and speak out, as I do. Others are not as vocal, and so, kind of what our call to action was, if you're not going to speak up to denounce it, then at least stand in solidarity with others who do. So, I commend Councilmember Vice Mayor Diaz for attending, there was 40, there were 40 electeds, and he mentioned this the last council meeting, that he went to to support Kevin Wilk, and that's what we need to be doing more as a region. In addition, I was sworn in, as I mentioned, as to the East Bay Division Board. That happened at Cal Cities. And then, I was also appointed by the president as the chair of the Community Services Policy Committee, so I'll be the chair for this upcoming year. On the 25th and the 27th, I attended the Clayton Pride Board Meetings with Councilmember Cloven. I also attended the mayor's town hall, and I do have to say that I do not agree with your characterization of what was going on during that, because there is no collusion. It sounds like we're in 2016 with Tamara Steiner, which is what I was accused of. So, I'm going publicly to let everybody know that that is false. In addition, I also was on a podcast with Capstone Government with Kevin Wilk, again, discussing combating hate and the rise, in rising up in our communities to speak out, and I will let everybody know when that is posted, so that we can share it. And then, on October 2nd, I attended the Mount Diablo Education Board Foundation. I mentioned that they had had a fun run, and I'll be giving you guys other updates from that board to let you know how we can be helping our community and our students that are at our local schools get funding. If there are any students who are in need of attending science camp or fifth-grade camp, that's what they help with. So, we can be sharing that with the teachers as we go, or the principals as we go see them. And the last thing is, last couple of things, meetings with our city manager, as well as our assistant city manager, and I filled it several questions about the Olivia Project, because people don't seem to understand what is happening with that, and I don't know if this is something I can ask you to do, but if you wouldn't mind, city manager, maybe giving one of your updates to explain to the community where we are on that. You don't have to answer, but go ahead.
No, no, I had already planned for one of the next two city council meetings to talk to our community development director about, is it possible for just a brief overview of where we're at with it? So, yeah, I mean...
That'd be great, yeah, because a lot of people seem confused and thinking that, you know, staff isn't doing their job, or things that I'm seeing coming through emails, which we all know is not true. And I will just say to anybody who's watching this video that any allegations that staff are not doing their jobs are false, and I, for one, would like for that to stop, because it seems to be a continuing cycle of what occurs before an election season, which is to disparage staff, which is unfair to all of you. And I can already see that that's gearing up currently, and it would be unfair for me to say, like, hold the line and just try to stay strong. It needs to stop. It seems to be a weapon that others are using, and it's completely unfair. So, to the extent that we can squash that now, that'd be great. I have a few tools that I'll be using to just show what the myths are and what the facts are, so stay tuned for those videos to be coming out. And in addition, I had shared on my social media that I'm going to be doing neighborhood, finding neighborhood ambassadors to host me in their neighborhoods or in their homes, so that I can be actually reaching out to residents to actually share with them what has been going on, ask me questions, because I think that it's very imperative that we're transparent, but also factual and honest as we're doing it. That's my report.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Thank you. I, too, attended the League of California Cities Meeting in Sacramento, the 20th through the 22nd. Very brief recap on my activities up there. On Wednesday, I attended the general session. Then, on Thursday, I attended four different seminars. The most lively, by the way, was navigating the new state housing laws, and I have not seen so many, how can I characterize it, but there was a line of city and other officials that were just absolutely adamant about getting back the local control and direction for housing going forward. A lot of frustration in that room, but definitely, they're mobilizing to work on an initiative to get local control back into place. Then, I went to a seminar on limits of public comment. Then, the next one I went to was reducing wildfire risk. That was important, because we are in our community here in the height of the wildfire situation, and to that end, we need to make sure that we are prepared, working with our local responders for that and local volunteers that can assist us should we end up in a wildfire situation. Finished out the day on Thursday with a seminar on hiring future local leaders, which was very interesting, but things that we've already done before. Finally, on Friday, I completed the two-hour annual requirement of harassment prevention training and was certified on that, and then ended up closing up with the general session on Friday afternoon. On the 28th, attended the County Connection Board Meeting, and it was our annual redoing the chairs, if you will. The first thing, Amy Werth, who from Orinda was our chairperson, now handed off the gavel to John Tazan over in Lafayette, and Kevin Wilk over in Walnut Creek was elected the vice chair. Myself, I was on the Administration and Finance Committee, and my rotation now is on the operations and scheduling for the County Connection. Then, on Friday, the 29th, I attended the EBRICS Meeting. That's the East Bay Regional Communication Systems Authority, and there we had a couple of interesting things that we were discussing. One was the new contract for Contra Costa Counties and their information technology agreement, and then the most lively discussion was around amending the restated communications systems agreement with Motorola Solutions. Motorola, in case you don't know, they handle the technological things that make all of the systems work, so that basically Alameda County and Contra Costa County are compatible. On the Saturday, the 30th, I worked in a ticket booth over at the Oktoberfest, very interesting as well. And then, yesterday, I attended a very interesting session at the invitation of the American Association of University Women, which was held out at the On the Bit Horse Ranch out on Morgan Territory, where we had great demonstrations on various aspects of horses and how they perform and so forth. It was a wonderful after, or excuse me, morning, and I really appreciate the American Association of University Women, and Joanne Casper in particular invited me today, this morning, meeting with the city manager, and that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Trupiano?
I guess I'll be brief. I also... I also enjoyed the League of Cal Cities. It was my first, and of course, I was there in Sacramento for training in January, so it was great to see some old friends and make some new friends, and I attended all of the breakout sessions. I think we all kind of divided and conquered, which was terrific, so that we can learn. I'm your voting delegate, but there was nothing to vote on, so, nothing to report on that. And of course, that wonderful East Bay Division meeting on Thursday evening was terrific to see all of our colleagues from the East Bay Division. And then, the only other thing I have is, I had a wonderful time volunteering at Oktoberfest. My husband and I both volunteered on Saturday afternoon, and I think my finger still hurts from opening hundreds of cans of cider. There must be an apparatus out there to assist with that, but it was really a wonderful turnout. And then, we went back on Sunday just to enjoy. It was terrific. So, thank you, CBCA, and thank you to all the volunteers and organizers, and particularly Marilyn and Charlie Schmidt and their children, who I met. Thank you.
You don't do the fast method with the screwdriver?
And I just forgot to say one thing. Sorry. Again, just a reminder that the library is having their next book sale, Saturday, October 28th, Sunday, October 29th, and a member preview on the 27th. And I have a flyer here, if anybody wants to take a look.
For me, I had quite a bit of conversation over email and phone with a lot of residents in town on a lot of the issues that we've talked about here. I've been traveling quite a bit for work, so I've been out of town for way too much, especially after COVID. I, I'm not used to it anymore. But I did have a chance to do the town hall that a few folks had mentioned, and that was great. I look forward to, to doing it again, or doing it multiple times again. We'll see. It's really just a question of scheduling. I think for this one, we tried to do it a few weeks before. Scheduling didn't work out because of reasons, and then, this is, that was the best we, that was the best we can come up with. So, I will look for future days to do other events. I do enjoy being able to actually answer people who have questions rather than just stare at them blankly, so that's fun. And that concludes my report. So, next is adjournment. The next scheduled meeting is October 17th, so this meeting is adjourned at 10:56.